As you know, our Senator Penglinen, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Ada, Senator Blas, Senator B.J., and yourself totaling two for six.
Six.
There's no quorum.
Sergeant Arms, can you please call our colleagues so that we can start? Wonderful, I think now we do, we may have eight. Can you again, please, announce who's here this morning and then let me know if we do have a quorum so we can start.
Okay, once again, currently present are Senator Penglinen, Senator Munia Barnes, Senator Rector, Senator Ada, Senator Palacios, Senator B.J. Cruz, Senator Blas, and yourself. It's two, four, six, eight. There is a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. The legislature is back in session and we are on, we just finished last night a vote so we should be back on motions and I'd like to recognize Senator Tom Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to move that bill number 178-30 be moved to third reading for purposes of discussion.
You're not going to the committee of the whole, what if?
That was, the bill was passed out yesterday, but if nobody has it on their desk then I guess we're going to get copies made. The bill, actually, Madam Speaker, is really simple. It's just simply an act to adopt the master plan of the Port Authority of Guam. It's a one-pager.
Well, I don't have a copy either. Or this one? Or the two?
All right, you check this one where that pile over there, I'm moving.
So basically, Madam Speaker, the title of the bill is "An Act to Approve the Jose De Leon Guerrero Commercial Port of Guam Master Plan Update 2007 Report."
Does everyone have a copy then? Did everyone find their copy?
Now, we do, we have made a copy of the report itself, the document that is to be approved, and that will be passed out to everyone, but let me just, if I may, Madam Speaker, just, well, first of all, I made a motion to put it in.
So the motion to place it in third reading?
Yes.
And you would like to speak on it?
Yes, just very briefly, and basically, on December 15, 2008, the 29th legislature gave conditional approval of the port's master plan, but asked the Port Authority to submit, to come back and submit the following: to submit an implementation plan, a financial plan, and an economic impact statement. The, provided as an attachment to the bill is, of course, this document which is, has been reproduced and will be circulated to everyone here momentarily. Basically, the master plan provides a general roadmap on how the port should proceed in the modernization of a facility that was put into service in 1969 and over the past 40 years has not undergone any significant capital improvements or modernization. If it pleases, if it's the body's desire to break into a committee of the whole to get into a more detailed analysis, we can do that, but I guess that's at the wish of the body. So if anybody wants that we go into a committee, break into a committee of the whole, we got officials from the Port Authority here, so we can do that.
Senator Ada, just from indication from our members that they would, so would you like to make that motion?
Okay, I move then that the committee, that the body resolves into the committee of the whole.
No objections, and so ordered. We're going to take a brief recess so we can allow the government officials, the port officials, to come in and, will they be sworn in?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. So a brief recess.
A call to order. We still got a couple of board members from the Port Authority that's coming in. Before we begin, I would like to just kind of outline the, how we're going to conduct this hearing. First of all, as I stated earlier, the Port Authority was asked to submit three plans or three documents. One of them was an implementation plan, the financial plan, and an economic impact statement. I would like then to conduct this hearing of the committee of the whole by reviewing and discussing the respective segments of the master plan sequentially. So we will first take a look at...
Implementation plan.
Okay. If you want to go ahead, we'll swear a minute. Okay. Yeah. Sergeant Arms, let's go ahead and swear in the, well, when she comes in, then you can swear her on the side, yeah. To continue, I would like to conduct the proceeding here in the following manner, in that we will take up each of the three segments sequentially. So we'll first discuss about the implementation plan. How is this modernization plan going to actually come to fruition? And then, when we finish discussing that and clarifying whatever issues members may have, then we'll proceed to the financial plan, which will discuss how the plan itself will be funded. And then finally, we'll take up the economic impact statement, discussing the impact of the $50 million investment by the Port Authority and the $156 million that's anticipated from federal funds. Now, for each segment, I would ask that the port officials, and I will defer to the board chairman, to basically decide who will answer the question, but I would like to ask that the port officials or their consultants give a brief, no longer than 10-minute overview of that particular segment, just to kind of get everybody focused in on that particular segment that we are discussing. Now, I'm going to presume that everyone has a question to ask or a comment to make, and so to ensure that every member gets an opportunity to participate, we will then have rounds of discussions or questions. So each member will be allowed to ask one or two questions, basically going by the five-minute rule, and ask your questions, allow the officials to respond, and then we'll go to the next individual who has raised their hand. That way, I think, everybody will get an opportunity to be able to participate. And then, following the dialogue in discussing the three components, we can then open up the discussions for amendments to the bill, for whatever amendments that the members may have to want to make. And then after we've completed making all the amendments that have, that are desired, then the committee will rise. At this point, I'd like to ask the Port Authority Chairman to introduce the people that he has brought with him today to this hearing, and then to allow him to make, to open with brief remarks, and then we'll go into the meat of this particular discussion. So, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Ada, and members of the legislature. I'd like to introduce, to my left, immediate left, is my vice chairman of the board, Giovina Luhon, and to her left is our general manager, Glenn Leon Guerrero. To my far right, next to Senator Ada, is our deputy general manager, Rick Augustine, and to his right is Nira, who is our PBI consultant on this port modernization plan. And to his right is also Paul Sorensen, who's the economist in regards to the economic impact statement that supports our plan. Also, on the back of our table here, on my far left is Ms. Dot Harris, who's the chief planner for the Port Authority of Guam, and on the right side behind the table, to my right, far right, is our controller, Mr. Jojo Gavara, and then to his left is our corporate services manager, Ms. Vivian Leon, and to her immediate left is our board legal counsel, Rebecca Santo Tomas. And I think we are expecting one more board member, Mr. Joe Camacho, who's our finance committee chair shortly, and we'll duly recognize him when he gets here in a few minutes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So with that, we'll go ahead then and we'll start the discussions on the implementation plan. So if the, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mesa, if you could go ahead then and give a brief overview of the implementation plan component of the master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Before I continue, I also would like to recognize another senior member of the port management team, Mr. Frank Santos, who is our port harbor master, who is joining us this morning as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senators, Madam Speaker as well. We're here today again. It humbles me to be the chairman of the Port Authority of Guam as we embark in this monumental challenge of improving our port. And as our chairman just stated here, this implementation plan that we've recalibrated based on your recommendations during our last hearing in December, we wanted to put together a plan that is, again, to demonstrate our ability to make this improvement without hurting the pocketbooks of our community. Secondly, we also wanted to ensure that we're not overbuilding this port beyond our capacity or beyond our means to fund it. We looked at that very closely, and if you see the implementation plan presentation that we've forwarded to your respective offices, you will see that we've done this presentation to so many different professional civic organization and business organizations, to include professional engineers, architects, and contractors, and they see that this is a solid foundation for an implementation plan to be executed, based in the timelines that are required of us, and more importantly, is to ensure that we meet the shovel-ready designation in regards to our application process for the ERA funding. So therefore, I open up any comments or questions that you have in regards to the implementation plan and the details of that plan, to ensure that, again, we need all the help we can get, and we're looking for your input, and I'm sure that whatever suggestions or comments you have, if it would, again, enhance the implementation process of our plan and the modernization of our port, we will do it, again, it's to our benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mesa. I would like to just ask, if I could, maybe, Nira here, to just briefly, real briefly, explain how this implementation is going to take place, the Phase 1A and the Phase 1B.
Sure. I think what I'll do is I'll work on the PowerPoint, the PowerPoint that I've made for you, and we developed an implementation plan, taking into account... Is that better?
Yes.
Put it closer, like that? Okay. Okay. You know, in developing the implementation plan, it was a complex task in that there are so many different factors that can affect how you implement the project. Number one is the cargo demand, obviously, because you've got to be ready, port-ready, by the time that the cargoes begin to ramp up. The timeline for environmental clearances is another major factor. If you, some of the elements that we need in order to do the full master plan take longer to get the environmental clearances, and some of them take less time. The impact of construction is another major criteria because ninety, more than 90 percent of whatever you folks consume, as well as the region, pass through that port. So we've got to make sure that the implementation plan does not impact operations to a point where it affects day-to-day living. Facing and sequencing was another major component in terms of, there are certain things like the chairman mentioned, some of the ERA funding has to be completed or dispersed by, in two years, by February of 2010, 11, 12, and so we tailored certain things to make sure that we can use that money. Organizational framework was also an important consideration because you need an organization to implement it. It's not like it'll happen on its own. And then we have an organization where MARAD will disperse federal funds, and the port, along with its owners, agent, engineer, is responsible for defining what is to be implemented, so that is within your control. So if you go to the, in a broad brush, if you go to this one here, you'll see the forecast and you can see the such definite bulge there of the cargo impending cargo, so that's major...
Page three.
That'll be on page three at the top, Senator. And then the graphic below that is the full master plan that we recommended about two years ago or one and a half years ago. And so the question is, how do we get there, and in how many pieces do we get there, using all these factors that we had been concerned about? So if you look at page four, it gives a graphic, kind of, which simplifies the process of implementing the project, and basically, if I were to simplify this, we would work on the portion to the east, which is in tan there, first, because it's outside, mostly outside the operational area, so to bring that online, if you will. New gate systems, new paving, new terminal operating systems, electrification, sewers, firefighting equipment, and so on. And then, once that is done, then we'll switch on and the sorage would move to the other area, and then what you see in the light blue is what would be performed in that part of the terminal, okay? This is all the ERA USDA project 1A, Phase 1A, as described in our document. That would get us through, say, 2010, 11, and February, March of 2012 is the target for completion of that, in order to satisfy the ERA requirements, as also, and also to be ready to be able to start handling cargo, which is going to start ramping up somewhat after that. 1B is basically the birth improvements, which take longer to permit, and that'll come in Phase 1B, okay? There is also certain other additional miscellaneous projects which would be included in 1B. Then, Phase 2 is the F7 and additional incremental expansion area, which would come in the future, and that would be in the 20-year timeframe. Our analysis shows currently that what you would need in 1A and 1B would get you pretty well through, over the 20-year time horizon. There is one thing which I wanted to emphasize, and that is on page six, if you look at the top there. That is a depiction of the cargo, the cash flows, and the various things which are going to be performed over the 20-year financial timeframe, horizon, if you will. The thing which is important about this is that the plan actually gets you set to be self-sufficient as a port for the next 20 years. So it has the cash flows built in for not only the 1A but 1B, but any future maintenance replacement capital that is needed, and so you're good for the next 20 years, based on the volumes of cargo that we are predicting from DOD, if you will, so that's...
Okay, thank you very much. So to summarize then what you said, basically, the capital improvements that's going to be undertaken during the period 2010 to 2013 will come in two phases. The first phase will basically focus on the productivity and efficiency improvements, and that would include new equipment, systems, buildings, and new yard capacity. And then, a Phase 1B, which will begin at around 2011, would then begin looking at the refurbishment of certain, the structural refurbishment of existing docks, the modernization of existing terminal areas, and the acquisition of cranes. So that gives an overview of the first phase of the modernization plan that will occur between the periods 2010 to 2013. So at this time, we'll open it up for any questions or discussions. Vice Speaker Cruz, Senator Uggan. Vice Speaker Cruz.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. As long as we've started with the crane issue, I think the port people know I'm not very happy with them because of the fact that I did suggest that they purchase the cranes from the Port of LA. Four years ago, I appeared at the board meeting and suggested it. They blew me off, and consequently, subsequently, the Port Users Group did exactly what I had suggested, and are charging us $125 a container to take the containers off the ships with the cranes that I suggested that you purchase. I'm now confused with your two slides on page five and six. You have on page five, purchase of cranes 2011 to 2013, and then on page six, you have replacement of container crane in 2017, 2018, 17 or 18 or 19. Which one is it? Or how many cranes are we purchasing? Which sets of cranes are we talking about? How much is it going to cost us?
Okay. Thank you, Senator B.J. Cruz. And before I respond to that, I'd just like to recognize that... And before I respond to that, I'd just like to recognize that we have our board member, Joe Camacho, joining us here also, from our Finance Committee. Yes, Senator, to the three points that you brought up. Your first point in regards to your suggestion, I believe that with your suggestion in purchasing that crane was a good suggestion, although I know that the port didn't do it exactly the way you asked them to do it. However, I believe that it was done in a manner and in, in the timeframe that was allowed that produced the result of having three brand-new cranes, refurbished cranes, on the dock. I, I feel that the management was prudent in reviewing the aspects of the logistics of acquiring those cranes, and I believe that it would be another monumental task for the port management with its current resources to execute getting that crane refurbished in the timeframe that it is now delivered in, in our port today and operational.
But if I can just interrupt there, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Unless my memory serves me right, and nearing sixty, I may be having some senior moments, but I thought that we, the port decided to go with the, with the refurbished LA cranes through Matson and Horizon, after you guys got all tangled up in a bid protest over the purchase of brand-new cranes. So you guys had never any intention of doing refurbished cranes. You guys were planning, had had an RFP out, and you had an, had ready to award a new crane purchase. So I just wanted to make the record clear that you guys were never planning on trying to do what I had suggested. It fell back on that, because when this was in protest, the protest was withdrawn after a substantial payoff to settle it. And now we're paying $125 per container to, to offload. So I think that the record needs to be clear about what, what happened and what you guys were planning on doing. Your, your plan was to buy a brand-new crane, which I have no problem with. But now we're talking about purchasing cranes, and I, and you can go to the next point of which cranes you're planning on purchasing, and, and how much it's going to cost us, because I want to get into the cost issue right after you answer them.
Thank you, Senator B.J. On your second point, again, I, on the first point, there were three factors that we had to consider. One was our choke point designation earlier on from Department of Defense, particularly JCPo, and again, looking at our port as a potential choke point. I think that we resolved that particular issue, and in this particular case, in bringing in the three cranes in a very limited timeframe and a, a monumental task to, to be completed, has alleviated that particular concern. Secondly, we also had concerns from the business sector in ensuring that all the cargoes that they're bringing in, in terms to support this community, both inside the gate, as well as the majority outside of the gate, and with all the proposed projected development for construction, we wanted to, again, reassure the confidence on all the investors that, that are continually looking at investment on Guam, that their confidence in the port continues to be a high requirement. And that forces us to, again, be prudent, be credible, as well as be transparent in, in everything that we do, to ensure that we respond accordingly to the requests of our customers of our port. Lastly, I, I wanted to bring up, in, in all of that, is also our ability to complete this monumental task, again, within the timeframe that was required of us to meet the projected development of the Marines movement. Having said that, to answer your, your second point in regards to why in our chart on page six, as you referred to, that we have earmark replacement container cranes, as any prudent investor and investment in any prudent business plan, you always have to look at replacing your equipment at an appropriate time, so you reduce the maintenance costs and alleviate additional cost burden to the operation. This is what we are planning, and as we've seen in today's examples, one example, like our schools, that continually face the same problem over and over, these are lessons that we've learned, and in our investment opportunity today at our port, we, again, with the guidance of our board here, and from our financial standpoint, with Director Camacho leading the financial strategy, we put in place a foundation to ensure that the investment that we put here of $206 million into this port gets refurbished on a timely fashion, and that the maintenance program will be implemented, so that we don't go to this particular exercise that we've seen time after time again in any of the public buildings that we have. This is the plan.
I, I appreciate the answer. You know, this is not a political speech-making. Please, concise. What is the lifespan of a crane?
Cranes today in the industry goes from anywhere from ten to fifteen in a refurbished condition. If it's a brand-new crane, it'll be fifteen to twenty years, depending on the activity that.
And so why do we need to replace a crane in 2018 that we haven't even purchased yet? I, I know my DI math is not very good, but it won't be fifteen years before 2018.
That's a very good question, and, and simply put, Senator, we have a five-year contract with the existing crane owners, Matson and Horizon. We have the opportunity to either possibly attain those cranes before the five years up, or we can have, send them away, and we can reinvest in, in brand-new cranes or other refurbished cranes. Those are some of the options.
Well, that's what, that's what I want to know specifically, because on page five, on the top slide, you have purchase of crane on, in between 2011 and 2013, and on page six, you have replacement of the cranes five years later. So what cranes are you purchasing? Are you planning on purchasing these refurbished cranes? Or are you planning on purchasing brand-new cranes? And if you're planning on purchasing brand-new cranes in 2011, I'd have a hard time approving this if you don't realize that fifteen years from 2011 would be in 2020-something, and you wouldn't need to replace it in 2018.
Yes, that's a very good point, Senator, and this is, again, the plan. If we need to implement it, we will. And again, this, as I mentioned earlier in my opening statement, that we calibrated this particular program to ensure that we don't overbuild, we don't overspend in investment equipment as well, but we will look at it from a demand standpoint.
You mean you have this entire crew on this side, this whole corporation that's been working for you, writing up this plan, and you cannot tell me today, in 2011, which cranes you're planning on purchasing? Answer the question. Is it going to be a brand-new crane, or are you purchasing the cranes from Matson?
Okay, two things. In your question, which crane we're replacing, we're going to be replacing gantry number two specifically. That's the oldest crane on the port. To your question on the second, are we purchasing a new crane?
For the 2018 one or the 2011?
If we're purchasing a new crane or refurbished crane, this is, again, a business decision of the board to look at the most economical way to, again, address the needs of, of our port. And if it's more economical for a refurbished crane to, to, again, take us to the lifespan of ten to fifteen years, and it's prudent in that economic sense, then that's, that's the direction. If it's prudent to go to a brand-new crane to take us to a longer period of time, and the investment opportunity is there to, to buy a brand-new crane, then that's fine. But in today's industry, Senator, buying a brand-new 50-gauge crane is not in the regular scope of production of cranes. In today's manufacturing of cranes, they are only producing in the factories 100-gauge cranes.
Then, then the answer should be, you're, you're going to buy a refurbished crane, because nobody's producing fifty-whatever gauge, gauge cranes?
That's correct.
Wouldn't that have been a simple answer, to tell me you're buying another refurbished crane? And I'm trying to figure out, with all these people here, how come we have two sets in 2011 and 2018? What, what, what are we planning on doing in that? Because every time you purchase, you know, or whether it's through, outside PMC, or whatever you guys call it, it, it's costing us $145, $125 a container. So what is it, how much are we going to, is it going to be costing us?
Senator?
Yes?
Your frustration relating to the, the ability of the port to acquire its own cranes is well-founded. As, as a member of the board that was brought on in September, I believe, of 2005, I, I do not recall the meeting at which evidently you appeared. Perhaps I was absent. But at that time, to speak to your suggestion that the Port of Guam purchased the cranes directly from the Port of LA, looking back at the information that was provided to us at that time, my assessment would have been, would be that even had the port made the attempt to do that at that time, that that purchase probably, in all likelihood, would not be materialized. And let me, let me see why.
You're digging yourself worse in a hole, okay? Because now you're admitting to me that in the five year, in the four years that you've been on the board, that you guys really never took my suggestion seriously, and you guys never discussed it.
No, that's not, sir.
Because you're saying you, you've not, there's been no plan for it.
Let me clarify.
You've just, you've just gone with the, with the Port Users Group and, and, and agreed with them, or actually, you're going to do a brand-new one.
Actually, Senator, it relates to.
I remember that you guys are going to buy a brand-new crane.
Just to clarify, sir, this relates to the Port of LA and their policy on the disposal of cranes. The Port of LA maintains a policy that any crane that is to be disposed of can only, can only be disposed at the time a replacement crane that's commensurate with the demands for cargo at their docks would be coming online for replacement.
It, it was already surplus, Giovanna. Please stop. You guys, it's getting worse. Your credibility was down to about one, and it, it's going to zero, and it's going to minus.
We, we accept that, Senator.
You know, you.
We accept that.
Like that cartoon the other day, when you're in a hole, quit digging.
Well, the next question, besides the Port of LA's disposal policy, also related to the compatibility of the cranes on the Port of LA's docks.
And where did this crane, these two cranes that you guys got come from?
Gantry three or two?
The two that you're, you're, you're currently paying $125 per container to take off? It came from Anchorage?
No, the Matson and Horizon cranes came out of the Port of LA, Senator.
Thank you. You guys are really stretching the limits of credulity, all right? I mean, this whole thing, I'm trying to figure out cost. Why is it that when you talk about the military, you, you describe it in the CDC on page, I mean CRC, on page 11 and 12, I mean, 11, at, for the military, it's $4 and 50, $145 a container, or $4.50 per ton.
Senator, if we could, I like, we'll get to the financial component, and then we'll discuss the financial issues.
Oh, okay. So I'm still trying to get an idea of what we're doing about cranes.
Could I?
Please.
Please, okay.
Okay, then we'll wrap up this crane, and we'll go to the next one, and we'll go to the second one.
If I may, I, I think you're absolutely right, that you could have gotten that crane off at a dollar a piece, or $50,000 a piece, or something, okay? But when you buy used cranes, it's just not that, because there is a big liability involved, and you've got to get the cranes off their dock within two weeks, or two months, or so on. And then there is enormous cost involved in transporting these. So if you buy a crane in LA, as an example, they are not designed for typhoon conditions like you would have here, so you'd need structural strengthening that you would have to do, and it costs millions, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. Then you need to transport those cranes in a Jones Act vessel, which is, which means it limits competition.
I, I understand that, and we, we've done it, okay? It's, it's finished.
Yeah, and then the other part I wanted to.
Never mind, it's finished. They're here, they came from LA, it's the same blasted crane. So just tell me, what are you purchasing in 2011?
Okay.
On page five, and what are you purchasing or replacing in 2018 on page six?
Okay. The answer to that is that the first, you know, what you see in terms of 2011 is our recommendation to the port is that they own their own cranes. Okay? So that is our recommendation. So we have budgeted that for three refurbished cranes, 50-foot gauge for Panamax glass vessels. So that's what you see on that first set of numbers.
Okay, great, because you've now said refurbished. Why isn't it very clear in here that that's what we're doing?
It is in the details of the master plan and everything, but we missed repeating it here, Senator.
And how much is it going to cost us to buy these refurbished cranes that have been sitting at our port, by 2011 would have been with us for four more years?
We have budgeted, if I'm, if I recall, about, in the order of about three and a half to four million a piece, because of the cost. If we were to do it, then we figured that it would be in that order of magnitude. Okay? So it may not cost that much, but it'll be in that order of magnitude. So that has been budgeted. Now what you see in 2017 is.
Okay, then, then out of this one?
Yeah.
Would you point out to me where that, that's listed?
Which one?
The four million, or the three million for the purchase of the crane?
Oh, it's on the implementation. The detail number is not provided, I don't believe, in this report. It's not to that level of detail, but. So if you look at, you know, in terms of timing, on when it'll be done, it'll be on this page 20. Okay, it's clearly marked as an additional crane.
I know, I'm trying to figure out which ones it is.
Okay, on, on the, on the cargo handling equipment and systems under 2012, we have 100% expenditure of that, okay? Now the.
Which cranes, and how much? Are you going to be buying the two cranes that Matson and Horizon brought in?
I will answer that, Senator, only if it makes economic sense. And, and you're right, in our initial master plan, in the implementation plan of the first original quotation of $195 million in our initial presentation of the actual master plan update, it calls for getting three cranes. And, and the price tag for that was around $14 million that we looked at, based on the initial plan.
The bid that you guys did last year, or two years ago, how much was it? Wasn't it 18?
The, the last RFP that went out for a brand-new crane, for a 50-gauge crane, was out at a total of $9 million for one crane just off the assembly line, and to include additional parts to it and other related equipment to it, to get it to, to, to us, is a total of $12 million for one crane.
And we're planning on how many? Two or three?
The optimum performance would be three. We were looking at, we had three in place. Of course, one, we had retired out, gantry number one. Gantry number two, at the moment, is, is, is the oldest one, and we've invested a lot of maintenance in it, and we're trying to just, again, keep it as long as possible. Gantry number three, at the moment, is also owned, Pink Slip is owned by Matson and Horizon.
Okay, and so how much are you guys thinking you're going to purchase it? I mean, it would seem to me that in some of these things.
It'll be negotiated, Senator?
Like when, like when I, you go out and you bought lease to purchase a car, you know that you're going to be paying X thousands of, X hundreds of dollars a year, a month on it, and then at the end of the lease period, you're going to pay X number of dollars.
That's true.
That it's going to be 20,000, or 30,000, whatever it is. After we've been paying $145... After we've been paying $145, I mean, $125 per container to offload, how much will we have paid Matson since we first got the refurbished cranes, or had charged to the users? How much would have been paid for those cranes? And how much are you guys planning on purchasing it from them for?
Okay, let me answer your two-part question. Your first-part question is how much were we estimating? It's only an estimate of what a refurbished crane in those condition and in those particular specification that is done. We were estimating it at no more than $4 million landed on Guam would translate to $12 million. Today, Matson and Horizon is pegging it. We have yet to see documentation, transparency, to see that what they're publicly stating is $18 million to $19 million cost. I've yet to see anything to substantiate that. But based on educated calculations by our consultants and from other industry experts, they say that if you were to do that yourself, you would expect at least no more than $4 million apiece. Total of $12 million to answer your question. Your second question in regards to, okay, what are we going to do in the future? Well, and what are we going to do with the Matson and Horizon crane? Well, that still remains to be negotiated. We want to make sure, this crane had just landed on island this February, it was operational in April, and we want to make sure that the operation of this crane lives up to the standard and the expectation of the port employees to ensure that, again, the movement of cargo is not impeded.
How long does it take to manufacture a crane?
Senator, I'm going to have to ask, we're going to need to move on to the next member. I did ask that we were going to go in rounds, and you've already had, actually, been on 25 minutes already, so...
And if I could have gotten answers, you'd have a vote for me of yes, but with these answers, you have a vote of no from me.
Senator, I understand.
Senator, Chairman, can I just add some thoughts, perspective on this? Senator Cruz, my perspective, and I came in after, I think, you had the discussion with the board about acquiring the used cranes from the Port of Los Angeles. When I stepped into the board, as a new board member, there was a lot of deliberation about acquiring cranes. There had been many attempts historically, prior to my joining the board, to acquire cranes, and they all failed for one reason or another. At the time that I joined the board, there was a lot of deliberations about new cranes, refurbished cranes. In fact, my colleague Giovina here came to me on many occasions to talk about acquiring used cranes. So I think to the point that you asked, did the board ever consider your recommendation, the answer is simply yes. The question of why wasn't it, why didn't it ever get to the finish line, I think, is a fairly simple answer, and that is that the port had failed to acquire its own cranes a number of times before that. And so the option that was always intended to be an interim solution, meaning that we had given Matson and Horizon a five-year license to operate their own cranes on our rails for a period of five years, that was always intended to be an interim solution. The strategy on the part of the port board and management has always been to figure out a way to acquire our own cranes, ultimately owning the assets that produce the revenues for the port. And I've been told that about 85% of the revenues that the port generates comes across the rails. So it's never been our intention to give up control of those rails to anybody for an indefinite period of time. So, to answer your other question about, you know, what is the intent to acquire cranes in the future, the answer is that we, as Monty points out, will look to the economics of the deal in terms of either acquiring new cranes or used cranes. It just so happens that there are three refurbished cranes on the rails today, so if it makes more economic sense to acquire those three cranes from the user group, Matson and Horizon, then that would be the option that we would pursue aggressively. And so, and then, you know, if... I know you're anxious to ask a question.
How much should you guys pay this group to write this plan for you?
The initial master plan in 2007 cost us under $400,000, or, I'm sorry, $450,000 for this master plan.
No, no, I'm trying, let him finish, and how much was the update cost us?
We were able to, again, ask the federal government through the Office of Economic Adjustment that we needed help to, again, enhance our master plan to ensure the final execution of the modernization of the port.
How much?
We, they funded us an additional $2 million more to complete this master plan, Office of Economic Adjustment.
So the first thick one cost $4 million, and this one cost, I mean, $400,000, this one cost $2 million?
No, 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 no.
How much was the total cost that you guys paid this group to write your plan and the update?
Can I just say, first of all, that this is our plan? That the consultants took input from the board and management and created the plan at our direction.
That's what I'm trying to find out, Joe, because-
So the cost of the initial master plan was somewhere in the neighborhood of $600,000, and the cost of the incremental work that they did on the feasibility, sorry, the financial strategy, the economic impact, and so on, was another $300,000. All of that was funded by federal sources.
Never mind who the funds, how much was the total line? Bottom line, how much total?
Okay, well, I answer that question, and I might have to move to Senator Uggan.
Senator, it's $488 plus $300,000 for $788,000. $350,000 was for the outreach.
Okay. Senator Uggan? Senator, I'll get to you. Senator Uggan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and to all of the members of the panel, I hope you indulge me in terms of some of the questions that I'm going to present, only because I wasn't part of the initial presentation of the original master plan to the Guam Legislature. Now, the Port Authority of Guam, based on your existing structure and what you have in place, what is your optimum capacity of usage in terms of receiving cargo and disposing of cargo?
I'll have the consultants respond to that.
Okay. The existing terminal, when you put it in terms of revenue tons, the capacity is about close to 2 million revenue tons.
Okay, you're talking financial numbers, I'm talking about capabilities. Based on the capability of bringing in cargo and transshipping it elsewhere, receiving and disposing of cargo-
Right.
What is your optimum capacity? Let's say in your peak period, during the holiday season, are you at 100%? Are you at 110%? If that's even possible, or are you at 90%?
No, once the improvements are made, we will be able to handle all cargo.
What is your existing capacity rate, right now?
Okay, if it is in...
Not in financial numbers, but just, if you have a capacity to transship 150 cargo containers-
I'm sorry?
If you have the capacity right now at transshipping and receiving and disposing of 150 cargo containers-
Oh, in terms of containers you're talking about, okay.
No, you're over activity.
Because-
I'm looking, I'm looking at this from a perspective of, okay, you're presenting a master plan, you need this master plan adopted and accepted by virtue of the legislative action. I'm trying to understand from a layman's perspective where the Port Authority of Guam is at this point in time. Are you at 70% capacity? Are you at 95% capacity? You're breaking at the seams, so that we need to aggressively move a diserection? Or is it because of the anticipated military buildup and the increased anticipated cargo flow that we need to move expeditiously on this?
Yeah, I think the peak cargo here is 2015, so if you take it off of that, you're currently at about 55% to 60% of capacity. And this, you know, what we are proposing would get it beyond what is needed for 2015.
I understand that, to a great extent, the specifics of the proposal. And obviously, that's why you formulate a master plan, and that's one of the reasons why we're here, to anticipate the increase in cargo capacity, the requirements of the Port Authority, and then move forward from there. Now, I'm looking at your overall, how would you differentiate, Mr. Chairman, if I could present this question? A, container cargo versus a break-bulk cargo? Because I'm looking at two different graphs here in which, on page two, I believe, or three-
Are you looking at the report?
Where there's a differentiation between cargo demand and forecast. Right now, information was provided that, based on the port's capacity, you're at 55% to 60%.
Yes, at our current cargo at this point. But at times, Senator, I know where you're going with this question, during the peak time, during the hotel development, we were over 100% capacity at the airport. Today, with the minimal business environment that we're in and development environment, we're at six, as consultants, when they did last year, again, in 2007, we were hovering around 65% capacity, and at times, only during certain development projects that were coming on board, certain bulk cargo, not necessarily container, were increased to about, close to 80% capacity. But overall, for the multi-use, again, I must stress that our port is unique in terms that it's a multi-function port. We're doing everything that most large ports, major ports, are only doing one thing, and that's handling only container freight. In our port, we are a multi-function port. All kinds of cargo flow through our container yard.
No, understood. So how would you differentiate a container cargo versus a break-bulk cargo?
The differentiation between the two, simply, Senator, is all cargo that come in 20-foot or 40-foot or 45-foot container is the container cargo. And in this forecast that you see on page three, basically looks at what in 2007 through 2009, currently, we're averaging 100,000 moves of containers through our port. And on the bottom graph that you see is break-bulk cargo, and we've seen that the break-bulk cargo through the port has been increasing, again, mainly tied into some of the development that is happening inside the gate with the Navy as well as the Air Force, but also some of the private projects that are ongoing today around Tuamun area. And this break-bulk cargo moved from over 140,000 tons is, again, looking to rise up, at least for this year, looking right under 200,000 tons of bulk cargo. So there's definitely a trend in this, and the bulk cargo, to define that, is all like rebars or odd-shaped material, construction material, or cargo that does not fit into a 20-foot, 40-foot, or 45-foot container. And it's odd-shaped cargo, which is, again, has special handling. It's easier to move a container in and out of the ship rather than these special break-bulk odd-shaped cargo that has to be handled extremely safely and, again, efficiently.
So looking at your overall master plan, you're looking at increasing your capacity by 150%? What is the anticipated percentage increase in terms of the capabilities of the Port Authority, based on the master plan through 2013?
We would virtually double the capacity to handle a combination of both cargos, so, you know, if there is more break-bulk coming, then to that extent, there'll be so much of containers and vice versa, so...
Okay, so let me follow up in terms of the implementation timeframe. I understand the nature of what needs to be done in terms of being able to ensure that this facility can accommodate a military buildup. Now, has there been any formalized, and I guess this will go to the chairman or to the general manager, Mr. Chair, has there been any formalized understanding or agreement with the military that their cargo, as a result of the military buildup, in conjunction with their regular operations, will pass through the Port Authority of Guam?
Yes, Senator, we are in active discussion with JICPO, the Joint Guam Program Office, as well as DOD officials. It's very encouraging, in the recent visit of the four-star General Duncan McNabb, who actually controls all the deployment of military assets in case of a action to be taken by our military might. And it was encouraging that, after we showed him this plan and looked at the financing strategy that we had suggested, he was very supportive, from where he stands as his place in DOD, that he would also help us, which we, as I said, we need all the help we can get. And it's very encouraging to hear from General McNabb that he would make every effort to help us secure the funding mechanism, in particular, to this ARA funding that we're going after DOT for the $50 million. He personally committed to us that he will make his phone call, he knows Secretary Lahud, the Secretary of Department of Transportation, and certainly, he sees that our national security concerns will be met with what the port is trying to do in protection of our nation. I'd like to add also, Senator Uggan, that, again, with him being here, we were also looking at having a strategic port designation. This designation basically gives us some priority in terms of federal resources in regards to national security requirements. And we're hoping that with McNabb's visit out here, that his purview over the strategic port application that we've embarked on might be forthcoming, and that would only strengthen our position in ensuring that we get, again, the high-level federal attention to include the President's office, that we hope we will get the support we're asking for.
Well, I think you used the word encouraging, so I'm certainly encouraged that. In fact, your discussions have led to this point, at this point in time, and especially if the four-star general is going to reinforce and endorse your $50 million application, which is the next topic, so I'm not going to venture into that, because I do have some follow-up questions on that. Now, let me ask you, with the existing military structure on Guam, does all of the transshipment cargo or all of the cargo for military operations presently go through the Port Authority of Guam?
Absolutely. Anything that's related to non-military component, again, you know, for military ships, of course, won't come through the port, but any commercial cargo that would support the quality of life, so to speak, inside the base, that's to support the commissary, all of that.
So right now, all of those cargoes go through the Port Authority of Guam?
Absolutely.
So there's absolutely no reason to think that things would change five years down the road?
The only thing that will change that, Senator, is if we do not pass this legislation for the master plan, and we do not get our funding application approved for the $50 million from the ARA grant. That would impact us, and it will force, possibly, possibly force, the military to take contingency action. And that's why we don't want that contingency to work. We want every effort to go into our port modernization so we can accommodate all cargos now and in the future.
Okay, so let me ask you a general question then, moving forward in terms of the military buildup. You're looking at doubling the capacity of the Port Authority of Guam, at least over the course of the next three, four years to accommodate the increased cargo transshipment coming into Guam and then going elsewhere. Now, after the military buildup is completed, now, are you looking at some of the enhancements still being actively utilized by the Port Authority? I would hate to see us build a facility that accommodates, let's say, 100-room hotel, and then, for the foreseeable next three to four years, every single room in that particular hotel facility, hypothetically, as an analogy, is being utilized, and then all of a sudden drops to 75 rooms. and then all of a sudden drops to seventy-five rooms. And then you have that excess capacity and capability that is just not being utilized.
That's a very good point. As I mentioned earlier in my opening remarks, Senator Augen, that we said we are not building this port to overbuild and overburden our financial capabilities, but we are looking at prudently and injecting those future plans of modernization. That's why we have a phase-one, phase-two approach. So that if demands increase and we can see that it will pay for itself, then we will inject the development. Of course, this board, as we speak now, you know, our term is up next year, and we just hope, again, we're laying the foundation to ensure that the new board that comes in, and any new board that comes in, continues to perpetuate this development as we have seen with the airport. That's the model that we're looking at to follow to ensure that we, again, establish a framework, a foundation to ensure that this modernization continues moving forward, even if we're not there. And we know that during this course, there'll be new administration. And we just hope that with this plan, it sets the motion in place. And hopefully, that, you know, again, a new leadership that come in will continue this so that we can finally realize the final modernization of our port.
Obviously, when you're looking at the master plan and trying to accommodate the military buildup, that's critical at this point in time. I think that over the course of the last eight to twelve months, you've seen some, a slight increase in terms of the cargo coming in as a result of some of the existing activities. But in fiscal year two thousand and ten, that is perhaps one of the critical timeframes, because you're looking at one-point-two, one-point-three billion dollars initially coming in. And that would give you a very good assessment as to what the requirements foreseeably over the course of the next five years would be in terms of the services being provided by the Port Authority. So I certainly hope that you're gonna be monitoring that very closely as we proceed into the next FY, which is just around the corner, and look at accommodating some of the military buildups. But I appreciate the responses. I do have some questions in regards to the financing plan, but I understand, Mr. Chairman, that that's gonna be entertained subsequently to this.
We'll move that to that segment.
Thank you very much.
Senator Pangolinan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I guess my number-one concern, of course, is that whatever action this body contemplates or any one of us contemplates taking, what its effect would be on the ability of the port to secure funding for its programs. Is it, are you telling me, or maybe I'll just ask a question, will the port be able to apply for federal grants and federal funding for projects delineated in the master plan on a project basis and not on a master plan basis?
Yeah, I don't see a problem there. You're talking, because as an example, security equipment.
Right.
You know, the intent is to apply for, to the Homeland Security Administration specifically on a project basis for things like that. So we would be breaking it apart.
So it'll be on a project. So we could apply for the upgrade of berth F-four, F-five, F-six, identify that as a project, and apply for federal grant and still qualify for federal grants?
Absolutely.
So we do not, so if the plan is not approved, the master plan itself is not approved, it does not jeopardize the ability of the port to apply for federal grants?
It does in the sense that, you know, the key components have to be done first in order to make the port more efficient and then generate the tariffs in order to pay partially for some of those improvements. So it's a mix of federal funding.
Yes, but it doesn't, it doesn't prevent the port from doing any of that?
It doesn't prevent the port from applying for it. But to have a full package that would take care of you for the twenty years, it's important to do these improvements first.
Of course, and they're gonna, but you're not getting funding for twenty years. You're getting funding for, you know, phase-one, year-one, year-two, year-three. So I know you're, so it doesn't really inhibit the port's ability?
That's correct, Senator.
Okay.
From board policy.
So I can vote no, and you can't go out there and say, "I'm preventing the port from advancing its operations, from getting funds for improving its systems." You can't, you won't, you can't do that. Or if you did that, you would be playing politics.
Senator, can I answer your question?
Yes, please.
The master plan, what you're talking about, asking for federal grants, absolutely. We can do that, and nothing prohibits us from doing that today as we speak. But the master plan that you have, that we're talking about today, the first 1A phase is a hundred-million-dollar project, which is a financial instrument, which is USDA loan plus the ARA grant. That takes us across, that allow us to take us across the line to meet the cargo demands that we're expecting. So if we, if you did vote no for today, then because we would not be able to go to the market and borrow, then it would, it would.
Why not? Why wouldn't you be able to go to the market and borrow?
Because the condition that the master plan was approved back in December was that we meet the implementation plan, present the implementation plan, the financial plan, and the economic impact. And until we satisfy that, we cannot go into the, we cannot go into the market and borrow. We cannot obligate the government or the port. That's the, that's the condition that we're faced with, Senator.
So if we repealed that law and said you can still go to the market without a master plan that's approved, with all the elements implemented, you have your, you built in your efficiencies, you do your projects, you do all that, are you telling me that the only reason why you can't go and borrow money is because it says you can't do so? No, 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 wait, wait, wait. That you can't do so without an approved master plan?
No, it does not say that, Senator.
All right, that's fine. That's all I want.
It does say, it say that we cannot borrow. But more importantly, Senator, the, again, for us to compete, especially for this ARA funds that we're looking for, we're competing with all fifty states and all different modes of transportation, from airports to other commercial ports to roads and railways. So that is highly competitive. And what we really need is, we need the support of this body that says that this is a master plan that you endorse. Now, if there's problems with the master plan, you know, clearly, I.
But again, the question is, and the answer was given, it does not.
That's correct, Senator, but it sends the wrong message, so to speak, as, again, in what we are trying to do to get ourselves ahead of, not just to meet the military demand, but on our economic growth in an organic growth mode. We want to encourage development on our island because that drives the taxes and the revenues.
If I vote no on this plan, it doesn't mean I don't like that economic development on our island. As a matter of fact, I love it, you know, because I get to appropriate the revenues. So don't say that if I vote no, it means I don't want economic development. It just says that the way economic development is passed and the way it is mapped out in this, that I'm not in agreement with this vision that you have. It doesn't even say that. It says that the elements of the implementation, for me, there are some questions that do not satisfy what I believe are necessary to be satisfied to take care of the people of Guam and to ensure that the people of Guam are not the ones that are going to bear the burden, in my opinion and my judgment, bear the burden of expansion of the port that may not be for the needs of the people of Guam exclusively. That's all it means. It doesn't mean I'm not for economic development. It doesn't mean I don't support the Port Authority of Guam employees, because I absolutely support them. I support their effort, I support their hard work, I support their professionalism, and I support their dedication. It just means that somehow the management in its presentation for its implementation of the vision that you present is not incongruent with what I think those employees are looking for or may need and so forth. So to say that, you know, if I, that I have no vote means we're saying no in economic development. It doesn't say that. It doesn't, it just says economic development and implementation of the improvements of the port as mapped out in the master plan. There may be alternatives to that. You may change some things that would say, "Oh, I love that, and I'll vote yes on that." So, but it doesn't mean that all of the other things that the master plan stands for are that I don't support. It means that there are elements of it that bring to me, in my mind, question on the legitimacy of the direction and the process and the implementation, and maybe some of the assumptions that went into the development of the master plan. And I'll tell you, the first thing is, you're telling me that the port and its management decided that we were gonna spend four hundred thousand on the master plan development, the plan for the next twenty years, what is gonna take us to the next century, to give the employees all at once. And you thought that the level of expertise and the dollar that you need to place in that in terms of is four hundred thousand dollars. And then you decide that, okay, so we need a financial feasibility, because there was none there. And you said, "Okay, in order to do that and accomplish all that, we need two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars of expertise." And then you come along and say, "Hey, we need an outreach program. We need a public relations program." And the public relations program is worth three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. If all it takes is four hundred to develop the entire vision for this thing, all of the economic analysis that goes into this thing, all of the financial fees, what kind of expert are we getting for four hundred thousand when we're getting, when we are paying three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to find out and ask Tan Maria Anton Huse, "Do they know that SPAM comes in through the port?" I mean, that's why I'm saying the employees had nothing to do with that, but it brings me to question the decisions made at the top end, that this is how much that's worth, and this is where we're gonna go. An outreach program, a telephone poll, a website is worth three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. And to determine what we need to do with F-four, F-three, and then F-seven in the next phase, to determine that we need refurbished cranes versus new cranes, to determine the economic impact on the cost of goods coming in is only worth four hundred thousand. But to find out whether Tan Maria knows that SPAM comes in through the port is worth three-fifty? That's where I say, you know, somehow, the scales from that top end is a little bit tipped, in my opinion.
Senator, if I may just clarify and set the record straight on what was spent on the various elements of the plan? Because our controller has given me the numbers. We were speaking from the top of our heads, and I think we need clarity here.
Yes.
So the master, original master plan was four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars.
Right.
The EIS portion was another hundred-and-eighteen. There was an amendment to that, to the plan consisting of forty-two thousand. So the total of that is six-hundred-and-forty.
Six-hundred-and-forty.
And then the financial feasibility piece was two-sixty-six.
Two-sixty-six.
For a total of eight-oh-six.
Eight-oh-six. And to determine whether or not the people of Guam know that ninety percent of the cargo coming through the port is worth three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand?
No, that was in the hundred-and-eighteen that we did.
Then what was the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand that you subcontracted to M2D2?
I do not, I was not involved in that project, so I cannot answer that.
So who knows that, but that was a decision that was made to subcontract that amount?
I can't speak to that.
Senator, I will speak to that. Again, in looking at our first initial attempt to update the master plan as first contemplated, and if you look back on the scope of work on updating the two thousand and one master plan, a lot of the groundwork has been done. And the price tag for the four-hundred-and-eighty million.
Thousand?
I'm sorry, I stand corrected, Senator. Four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars was, part of that was a reduced cost, because there's already an element of some of the basic historical information, statistical information that's already been established. All we needed to do was update that and calibrate that to the current conditions that were being faced at that time, a point in time in two thousand and seven. Therefore, that's why that if we were to start all over and start from ground zero, it would have been a higher price tag. But because we have already had established historical information, historical data, and historical statistics that displayed up, and all we needed was to upgrade that from two thousand and one to the present term at two thousand and seven, it, we negotiated as best as we could the price of four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand to update that and looking at the new opportunity of this military growth. And that is the fact. In regards to your question in regards to the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand and the financial feasibility of three-hundred-thousand, that, again, was a negotiated.
Financial feasibility of two-hundred-and-sixty?
Two-hundred-and-sixty-six. I stand corrected. Again, for the financial feasibility, because we needed to ensure, again, to validate our assumptions as we stated. This was, this is a Guam plan fortified and initiated and visualized by the port management and the staff there. All we did was provide them guidance and reaffirm the direction that we all wanted to do. This is a result of a series of smart management work sessions that we had and understood the, again, the need, like you said, to understand what the port employees wanted. And all they wanted was provided the resources and the support of getting them their equipment, state-of-the-art equipment, state-of-the-art technology to do their work.
So you rely on the port employees to do that? So let's just go then to the issue of the cranes and the implementation of your plan for the cranes. When you entered into the agreement with Matson to do the cranes, did you ask the port employees their opinion?
Yes, we did. We had a debate on that, yes, of course.
Okay, all right, no, 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 wait, wait, wait. That's fine. I know, okay, so you did. Now, you, the management, entered into this MOU with Matson, right?
Yes, we did.
And the MOU with Matson said that they had to put in the cranes by a certain date, correct?
Yes, there was a time element.
December, March, which one is it?
Oh, it was supposed to be February of two thousand.
February of two thousand and nine.
Correct.
Right. So Matson came to you and said, "Hey, we can't meet that date. We want an amendment to the MOU." And you went back to the employees and asked them their opinion? On how should we change this MOU now? Matson wants to change it because they can't meet the deadline. You already, and did the port employees tell you, "Should we just lease it for five years? Should we..." What was their recommendation? I mean, did they say, "Monty, let's just enter into a five-year lease, give them that. Let's not, let's not determine what the cost is gonna be. Let's not determine what the port revenue's gonna be. Let's just give it to them, just like the MOU." Did the port tell you that, or did they give you some other suggestions that would have improved this MOU?
Sure, there were suggestions.
And what did you do with it?
What, the suggestions?
Are they in the MOU?
It's in the agreement in terms of that the port continues to generate the revenue that we are currently enjoying under the conditions that we have with gantry number three, which is owned currently by Matson and Horizon. Secondly, Senator, we had the opportunity to gain rental income, rental income of twenty-three thousand dollars a month that we have not raised.
I know, it's twenty-three thousand dollars a month.
That was not there in the original picture.
And Matson is making three million dollars a month, or whatever the amount is going to be. You know, so the port makes twenty thousand a month. You give a license to Matson, and they make a million a month, or eight-hundred, nine-hundred thousand a month. What a great deal. I think the employees told you that that wasn't that effective. And when you had a chance to renegotiate, or at least Matson came and said, "Let's amend this MOU." When you say you have this plan, and this plan was already in place, right? The development of this plan was already in the process and so forth. And your consultants are telling you, "Hey, two thousand and eleven, let's buy some cranes." So you, so you had a chance, Matson says, "We can't meet this. Let's renegotiate this, or let's amend it so that we don't default on our MOU," right? So did you, the board members then, say, "Hey, now's the time to say, 'Look, we're gonna buy the cranes in two thousand and eleven, and we're gonna want refurbished cranes and kinda make sense for us to buy this. Let's build in an option to purchase as part of this amendment.'" Did you do any of that?
Those were all deliberations.
What I'd like to do is try to raise this back up to your original question, which is, you know, do we need a master?
Why, Joe, are we kinda like?
And I think that the answer to that question is that. And I think that, um, the answer to that question is, is that, in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of the board collectively and the management and the community, is we do need a master plan.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying whether you need a, I agree you need one, Joe.
Okay.
I don't, I'm not debating the issue of a need for a master plan.
Okay.
That, I agree with you. The port needs a master plan.
I think the master plan needs the support of every single individual in this room because it provides us a roadmap for how we're going to take the port from where it is today, which is a very, uh, it's a, it's a very delicate situation at the port. And thank, thank everyone that we have an interim solution, which is the, the three polar cranes that were provided by Matson and Horizon because that helped us to gain a much higher level of credibility with the community, with the military, with everyone who is looking at the port under a microscope.
But, Joe, but not with me, Nigel. Because the way that thing is structured, it doesn't give me, you, you didn't build credibility with me in the way that went down.
But I think where the element of credibility comes in is we never intended this to be a permanent solution. And you really have to hone in on that because, because our strategy has always been to acquire the cranes, own the assets.
And why, why didn't you think of that when you, when you had a chance to amend the agreement?
But that's why we made it a five-year agreement.
No, it was always a five-year agreement. So, when, when, when they came back and said, "We can't meet our deadlines. We can't meet what we signed to. We need till April," and you amended it till April, and your vision is to acquire cranes and the vision is these cranes are coming, they, you know, why in your vision did you say, "We don't need to discuss the idea of option to purchase now?"
Um, we, we had those discussions with Matson and Horizon separately. And, um, and to this day, they continue to look me in the eyes and say, "We're not in the business of owning and operating cranes. We were more concerned about turning our ships around at the Port of Guam because of the impact to their revenues on the water between here, China, and the United States."
And you think an option to purchase would have impacted that?
Um, you know, possibly, I don't know, but.
Well, I mean, because you're not, you're not negotiating the issue of operating the cranes or maintenance. It would have been to build in an option to purchase of these cranes at a later time.
But I think that the issue there, Senator, what it boils down to is the procurement law, you know? It would have made it look more like a procurement as opposed to a license agreement with Matson and Horizon. And that we were trying to clearly avoid because we want to follow the law. So, I think, but to also address your question about whether the board, this board has taken into consideration the feelings of every employee at the port, the answer is simply yes. We have to take into consideration the impact to Tan Maria and Tun Jose, as you said. We have to take into consideration the impact to every single employee and we have to take into consideration the impact to our community as well as the outlying communities that this port serves.
Joe, how long, how long did you give the employee and the people reviewing the MOU in the amended MOU, how long did you give them time to, to review it?
Uh, it was, it was.
Like, two hours, four hours?
This was a, this was a decision that had to be made very quickly because of certain board decisions that were needed by Matson and Horizon. I, I know that I deliberated over the phone with various people for hours on this point. And, uh, and I only agreed to go along with this, uh, this interim solution because it was limited to five years. And, uh, and that, and Matson and Horizon had represented to us, uh, that, you know, their, their intention was not to hold this long-term and that eventually, you know, there was support, uh, the port having.
Well, Joe, we both.
Okay, Senator, I'm going to need to wrap this up. Okay, one last one.
One last one. We both went to Catholic school. We know that the road to hell was paved with good intentions.
Absolutely.
Um, but one question. One of the concerns I have, of course, is the implementation of the master plan. And the fact that we are, in approving this, we're saying, "This is where we want to go." So, when we look at the EIS requirement, when we look at the current EIS process under NEPA for the military expansion, that that NEPA process is supposed to take a look at the impact to the community of Guam overall with all of the elements of the military expansion. One of my concerns, and, and you may be able to answer this, is if we approve this and we say, for example, that this is the, this is what we want, so whatever it takes to do this and whatever environmental, um, degradation that's going to incur by conceptually approving or legally approving this master plan and say, "When you implement this and there's an environmental impact, we don't care. We're saying do it, but do it with the plan of the, of, of the expansion, but you still have to get your environmental permits and so forth." But we're already saying, "We agree to that." Now, if we approve this now before the environmental impact is done for the military expansion, what's the impact of that? Are they now a little bit off the hook and say, "Oh, there's no impact on the environment for any expansion in regards to the port or anything related to the activities that's going to occur around the port under our EIS because the Guam government has already said this is their plan and it's, it comes along with all of the environmental problems and environmental degradation that will occur and we're approving it." That's one of my main concerns with this is that, you know, this NEPA for military expansion and all improvements is supposed to take a look at the entire island and what it's going to do for each of the elements of the plan needed to implement the military expansion. And now we're saying carve out the environmental impact on the port because we're going to do that, we're going to be responsible. You don't have to mitigate that, we will. Um, I don't know if that's a correct assumption, but it is a, a, an issue I am worried about. It's the same thing we're doing with approving the, the transportation plans and the road plans. We're saying, "This is our plan and we're going to deal with the environmental impact." So, now the military comes and says, "Oh, we don't have to worry about the environmental impact of our expansion on the roads because they already have their own plan and it's going to, to, to do that." So, it doesn't become cumulative. The NEPA environmental impact that the military needs to do for Guam needs to be cumulative. And what the military has done over the years in terms of its expansion here with the bed-down facility at Anderson, with the extension of the runways, is they kind of carved those out. So, they say, "Okay, we're going to do this project. This is now disturbed property." Then a new project comes along and next to, to that disturbed property and said, "Oh, there's no impact because that is, everything around it is already disturbed," you know? So, we've kind of carved it out and so we have now, by either tacit or implicit approvals of these things, have approved carving out and piecemealing the environmental considerations under the NEPA process. So, I don't know if that's real, I don't know if it's, it's untrue, but I'm concerned about that because I just know what the military has done with regards to each and every environmental impact statement and it's been doing for these piecemeal expansion. And what they have done and what I have seen them do in justifying this project and saying, "It's okay because we already disturbed it with this other one."
Thank you, Senator.
Well, you know, I, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I just have to leave. And so, I just want to say, um, and before I leave, that I appreciate all of the concerns of the legislature. I think there are a lot of valid concerns. I think at the end of the day, we really need to step back from all of this and ask ourselves, is, "Do we need a plan?" I think the answer is yes. Can, uh, do, you know, do we build credibility in the financial community and with the federal government by having a plan so that they can help to us to support our financial needs to build this port? And I think the answer to that is yes. And, um, and does this need the support, a unified approach to all of, to all of the needs of the port for the benefit of the community, the employees, the outlying communities that I said earlier? The answer is yes. And did, did this board and the management come up with answers to your questions the last time we brought this master plan before this, this, this legislature? And those three elements were the financial strategy? Yes, we have. The economic impact study, yes. Uh, and what was the third thing? The implementation plan, yes. So, you know, we've delivered and I think we are very intentional and very concerned about how this impacts the, the community. And, uh, and so I think, uh, I would ask that everybody in this room support the plan.
All right.
And, and I would appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
But I just want to say.
Thank you.
Yes, you've developed all the elements. It's up to us to see if we're satisfied with the elements you've presented.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Any other speakers on the implementation component of the plan, Senator Richter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I hate to sound like I'm flogging a dead horse on this, but, um, I really want to like go back and look at these cranes that we have here because there's some, some issues. I just pulled up the, uh, the lease agreement. And, uh, I, I have to, I have to compliment, uh, your legal counsel on this, how it says that we managed to get around procurement laws and get around just about everything to, to get this lease into, into place, whereas it says, "This shall not be construed as a public-private partnership." And yet the cranes are owned by a private company being operated on public land in our public port. So, I, it's quite creative legal work to, to make all that happen. So, that being said, when I look at this lease agreement and, um, and we look at the numbers, so we're paying 125 bucks per can for five years, right? That's what we're paying for these cranes.
At the moment, that is the current scenario. And again, uh, there are other strategies that may.
Oh, hold on a second. Fill me, fill me in on this then. Are you telling me that, that it could change next week, that it can be $250 a can?
No, it, it can also be that it's the other way around, a lowered amount.
Who determines that?
That would be something that would have to be negotiated with the carriers. And, well, because, because the arbitrary, it's an arbitrary charge from both Matson and Horizon and they filed that to the maritime commission. They can always go back and rescind that and adjust that. That is their, their right and they go through that process. I want to make it clear for the record that that particular arrangement was all on their own. The port had nothing to do with that additional charge to the container. They did that as a business strategy and, yeah, if, you know, I can see, those guys, of course, are in the business of making money, no question about it. We also at the port look at how we continue to generate business from what they've provided us. We have, as they call it in their terms, $18 million investment. The port is still making the revenues that we generate every day. On top of that, there's additional revenue for rental. So, it's not a, you refer to it as a lease agreement, it's actually a license agreement.
Okay, a license agreement. Once again, semantics. It's, uh, it's, it's good legal work on, on your legal staff's, uh, part. So, you know, we've heard a lot of numbers going around and, and now we say 125, but you're getting, you're, you're getting money back because you're leasing the space to, to these cranes, but they're charging us. Look, just for the, for the average Joe at home that's paying for this, right? Because at the end of the day, the consumers of Guam, the people of Guam are paying the $125 a can. I know because when I, when I put up a, when I put up a bill to add a fee on to every container, I believe it was less than 125 a can, I had the business community up here screaming and yelling saying, "Oh, my God, nobody will be able to afford this. The price of rice will go through the roof and every family will suffer." But for some reason, I didn't hear any of them screaming and yelling about the 125 when Matson put it on. So, let, let me understand the entire relationship on this with these cranes. Now, first off, nice and simple, how many cranes do we get from Matson and Horizon?
Today at the port, Matson and Horizon owns four cranes sitting in that container yard on the rails. Four cranes.
How, how many cranes do the people of Guam own on our docks?
We own one crane, crane number two, gantry number two.
Okay. So, then we have five cranes total on the docks right now.
That's correct.
Okay. So, the four cranes that Matson and Horizon own, how many of them came in on this lease agreement?
Only three, the refurbished cranes that came out of the Port of LA.
Okay. So, let's, let's just talk about, focus on those three cranes, if we could. So, we have three cranes that, that we are leasing space, I want to make sure I get these terms right, uh, that we are leasing space to Matson and Horizon, uh, to use on our port.
Right. It's the license agreement for the use of the rail at our docks.
Okay. How much are we getting from Matson and Horizon per crane and how does that, that relation? If we're leasing it to them, I assume they're paying us for the lease?
Yes, it's 23,000 per month for the three cranes to sit and operate on that rail. In addition, all the cargo revenues that come in through their ships that are unloaded at our docks continue, the port continues to generate the tariff charges accordingly. Nothing, nothing has been taken away.
That's a whole separate function. No matter who owns the cranes, our tariff charges are already established, correct?
No, but even, even they use the crane, we still charge them, uh, for the, the normal fees that are being charged today with gantry number two and gantry number three, which they own.
Right. But, but generally the tariff charges are the tariff charges. It didn't matter who owns the cranes, those were already established, correct? Okay.
That's correct.
So, how much a month are we getting for the cranes again?
23,000.
23,000 dollars a month. Okay. Now, if they're charging us, the people of Guam, $125 a can, how much, how many, how many containers are we moving through their cranes a month?
It depends, but it averages for each, for both of them on a monthly basis, somewhere around 500 crane, uh, 500 containers for the month.
500?
500, uh, I'm sorry, per week times four. So, potentially 2,000 to 2,500 per week depending on the, uh, I'm sorry, hold on. The specific, you want to answer that, Glenn? You're, you're more into the day-to-day operation.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure somebody should know how many cans we bring to the port every month, right?
I can give you a guesstimate, but I think, Paul, do you have the direct numbers?
I have the numbers.
I ask for the numbers. Why don't you give, no, I give the numbers that you have. Yeah, why don't you give him the numbers?
My estimate?
I, I have the numbers right here. For example, again, the total containers, like I said, was averaging around 2,600 per month for both of them. For, for, uh, for example, for the month of July in 2009, Matson itself brought in a total of 2678 containers. Horizon Lines brought in, uh, for the same period of July 2009, a total of 1880 containers for the month.
Okay. So, then, right now, we're averaging about 2,600 containers per month and that's for all three cranes put together?
Well, the three cranes, but remember, we also have the two cranes, as I identified, gantry two and gantry three.
Right. But like I said, let's focus this discussion on just those three cranes in this license agreement.
Okay. But let me, let me just lay a foundation here that we operate, or at least the general manager has the sole discretion of operating that port and where the equipment is placed. Today, if we are using, if our cranes are in operation, we are using them to unload all the ships so that we can continue to generate the income, but also try to reduce the 125 that you're referring to. The only way that Matson and Horizon can continue to charge the 125 is if we continue to use their cranes on their ships. However, if our cranes, number two, number three, are operational and continue to be able to unload safely and efficiently the containers out of Matson and Horizon, then that 125 is zero. But until, and until then, until we continue to employ our own asset, equipment, then that 125 would not be charged. Of course, their position would be, they would want to use that because it has an economic impact to their bottom line. But as we are the, uh, control operation of the port, then it's at the discretion of the general manager and we hope, and, and that's why we are investing a little bit more maintenance to ensure that in the next, you know, four to five years, that the useful life will be. be, will be enough so that it continues to, to generate
Okay.
...the revenues directly for the port and reduce the cost to the community.
I appreciate it. Boy, you have so much information, and like, I, I'm going to keep trying to focus you in on answering my, my questions, because sometimes I, I get a little distracted, right? And I'm losing track on this, and you're, you bring up more and more questions as you, as you discuss things. So if I can go back and focus on it. Now, when I ask that, I want to make sure I know these numbers right. So, right now, on the three cranes in this license agreement, that are covered by this license agreement, we are bringing in an average of 20, 2,600 cans a month for, on those three cranes?
For, for, the average for each company. I just, I just gave you a total of 2,600 for Matson and 1,800 for Horizon, so if you get that and you average it out.
Twenty-six plus 18.
Eighteen, correct, yeah. At least for the month of July, as an example.
Yeah. So, because see, I want to make sure I, I understand all these numbers, so we're working right. So, then that means, between the two companies, we're bringing in 4,400 cans on those three cranes?
As again, as I told you.
Just, just a rough estimate.
Potentially, potentially, because as I told you, we still got gantry two and gantry three.
I know, things go back and forth. I just want to come up with, with the number that, that I can, I mean, we can speculate on all sorts of stuff, but let's deal with, with what we got. Hopefully, we didn't just kill somebody in the door there. The things that happen off-camera. So then, on average, we're, we're looking at a rough estimate of the people of Guam are currently, or in the month of July, because those were the numbers you got, are paying 550,000 dollars extra per month to these guys for the use of their cranes.
That is correct, if, if all of those three cranes are used specifically and just that.
I, I, I'm just asking what we're using for now, and I assume that there's not going to, and as materials go on, I mean, there's always going to be fluctuations, but we're expecting, when I look at your projections, we're, we're expecting to get more containers in, in the future. So, if, if we take an estimate from, from July, we could only assume that in the next five years, the term of this license, that we're going to be running more than this capacity.
Yes, and some of that capacity is also coming from foreign vessels. But today, you're right, the majority of the containers do come in by the U.S. carriers. That's correct.
Okay. So, just on those rough numbers, and I, and I've got another question to come back on that. So then, 550,000 dollars a month times 12 months times five years is a grand total of 33 million dollars? Is that what I got? So, is, is that right? 33 million dollars? I mean, it's just a rough estimate, give or take.
In that hypothetical situation, yes. I mean, that, that would, that would be a prud, a practical way of, of calculating that, yes.
I, I mean, like I said, I mean, I know, like, it's hard to project that far in the future, but, so, 33 million dollars over a five-year period, didn't you, didn't you say that each crane we could, we could have bought these ourselves for, didn't you give me a number, like new ones are 4 million dollars?
If I might intervene for a minute, Senator?
Yeah, thank you.
I'm, I'm just going to ask, we were throwing out these numbers of about 4,400 cans a month, and I just want to ask Mr. Mesa to clarify, are all the cans that are brought in chargeable? And two, the, you know, that figure that you've estimated, who pays for the maintenance costs so that, you know, the, the, this 500,000 dollars a month is, is, I guess, net out of that, who pays for the maintenance costs for those cranes, so that then we get to really a, a more realistic figure?
Right.
So, so if you would allow him to answer that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Here's the chair.
All the costs are chargeable. Again, Matson and Horizon charges their customers, and this is where the charges go in, and they, from their perspective, they talk to all their major customers and explain to them why they're charging them this. It appears that their customers have sort of accepted the interim solution, but you're right, it does trickle down, and, and at least in my perspective, from a retail perspective, I haven't seen the prices yet been, been changed, from a retail perspective. Now, who, who pays the costs of the maintenance? They do. They continue to, again, invest in the maintenance, which is part of the agreement, as you called it. That was one of the things that we contemplated, that they continue to, to again, provide the maintenance support, because they still own the cranes.
Okay. Mr. Chair, can I continue?
Please.
Thank you. All right, we're, we're going to get to that. So, now, something, I, I want to make sure I, I understand this number for a second. Now, the, the 4,400, we had 2,600 from Matson and 1,800 from?
From Horizon, in the July example.
From Horizon, okay. Now, when other carriers, when foreign carriers come into our port, do they get unloaded by these, by these cranes as well?
Uh, no, not from the polar cranes at the moment, because as I said, if our current equipment, number two crane and number three crane is in operation, and the mobile harbor crane, we will deploy those first, because that is the prudent thing to do.
Oh, okay. So, but, that being said, in, in the license agreement, if for some reason, all the rest of our cranes, like our cranes, the people of Guam's cranes are out of, out of business, then they can use their cranes, or we can use their cranes, or somebody can use their cranes to unload containers from foreign vessels?
That is correct. The general manager controls the operation of the port.
Okay, thank you.
And.
So then, as, in, since we've had them on board, have we used, have we unloaded any foreign vessels with, with those cranes?
Yes, we have, Senator. Can I also make a point of clarification, please?
Okay, before you go on, just, just, you said, yes, we've unloaded foreign vessels.
We have.
How many cans, just, if you can go off the top of your head, do you have any idea?
I don't have any.
Couple ships, three ships, five ships?
We did, we did one ship.
We've done one ship that we know of?
Right.
Okay, I'm just, and, and how many, just off the top of your head, how, I don't, I have no idea how many containers are on a ship, so.
It's a, that's a hard number for me to play, Senator.
I suppose, because not all the containers are for us, right? Sure.
We used one of the polar cranes on the barge that came in from Saipan. The barge is not a self-sustaining vessel, in other words, you have to use some sort of crane. And if my recollection is correct, we did start and loaded back 45 containers altogether.
Okay, so we, we brought a barge in from Saipan, 45 containers, and we used these cranes to, to do it. Okay. That, but that number wasn't in your estimate, right?
No.
No, okay. Now, is, is there potential in the future that we may, may use these more for, for foreign vessels? Obviously, we've done it once, we'll probably do it again, right? Chances are.
Yes.
Okay. So, I, I just want to look at these numbers real quick to make sure that they, they make sense for me. So, over the five-year span of this lease, if nothing changes, and we stay with July's numbers, right, I know things can change, but I think it's pretty safe to say, by your own projections, that if things change, they're going to go up. The number of containers coming through our port's going to increase over the next five years, not get less, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So, then just by these rough numbers, over the five-year period, the people of Guam are going to pay 33 million dollars to Matson and Horizon for the license of their crane?
That's, that's not correct.
Okay.
What, what, first of all, the port is not, again, in, in control, and it's not charging the 125. This is a, this is a crane surcharge that Matson and Horizon are charging their customers. And they've also said that, that they are imposing this surcharge to recover their cost of investment for, for the 18 million. I also recall them saying that, that once they reach their investment amount, then, then these fees will no longer be charged.
Okay. Let me get some clarity on that before you go on, because that's, that's a good point. So, and that's what I was going to follow up on. If, if you could, if you could tell me, like, where is it in writing on that? Where is the trans, we, we, I know you have that term CAT, right? Transparency. Where's the transparency on these numbers? Do we have, do we have, can we audit their books? Do we see that there's 18 million that they actually spent, one? Two, do we have, do we know how much they're spending? Do, do our accountants, do good public sector accountants, the public auditor get to audit these funds and find out? Or is it just we're relying on their good faith, all of a sudden say, "Well, we've made enough money, we'll quit charging them"?
No, Senator, we're, we're doing, first, there's, there's two, two things that you brought up. One was that, as, as Monty said, they've said that, Matson and Horizon have said that it cost them 18 million dollars. We've not bet at that. So, yes, you're right, we're relying on their, on their word as, as, as they transmitted to the Federal Maritime Commission to increase their, their fees by 125 dollars. We are, however, tracking all the, the, the containers that are coming off since, since we've put the polar cranes to use. So, we are doing that. Do I have the numbers? I don't, but, but I know we are doing that.
And, and I would hope you're counting the number of containers that come through the port and what crane they come off of.
Absolutely, Senator.
Right? Yeah, of course.
That's the good work.
You've got to do that, otherwise, how would you be knowing what tariff to be charging?
Absolutely.
That's how you guys make money.
Senator, if you'd like, we, we could publish that, actually.
Well, I, I think you probably do publish it in one way or another.
That's right. Every month, management reports to the board, all the details of the cargo.
I understand, but that's not the question I'm asking right now. The, the question I'm, I'm asking on this is, at some point, if you say that somehow, once they are paid off in this five-year license, once they paid off their 18 million dollar investment, which we really don't know if they've invested 18 million dollars or not, they might have invested 5 million dollars, right? We, and, and we have no way to verify or check that, is that true? That's not part of the license to, to look at the accountability of it?
As, as the general manager stated, again, we control the operation of the port.
I didn't ask that, I just asked about the investment of the crane.
And we can calibrate that, and we, we can estimate when, and how much, and how many containers are being unloaded by the polar cranes. That I can assure you, Senator.
Right. I, I know, you're in control.
Just a, just a short point of information on that 18 million dollars. That 18 million dollars included a payment for the settlement of a lawsuit which challenged the port authority's authority or, or, on the procurement of the new cranes. So, Matson and Horizon paid the vendor that was awarded or, or had been put in his bid so that he could go away so that they can put in the cranes.
Okay.
Senator, that's speculation, I don't, we can't verify that, we don't know.
Okay, well, whether it's, whether it's speculation or it's not speculation, this is leading to, to the whole part of transparency that I'm having trouble with, right? When, there's a reason government has, the, the government of Guam has good procurement laws, because we want to make sure that the people's money is spent properly, that it isn't being stolen, and it's not being funneled off, that we have good numbers, and government accountants and public employees and the legislature can look at these numbers and make reasonable decisions based on the numbers, because we're responsible to the people of Guam, just like you're responsible to the people of Guam. But realistically, we're not going to see any of these numbers. The only thing we're going to know is how many cans come off those cranes. We have no idea whatsoever how much they invested, and we're never going to know, is that correct?
That's a fair statement, yes.
Okay, so, thank you. I, I really didn't know that before we started, so I mean, please play along as I'm trying to figure out where we went with this, because I hear lots of people complain on it. So then, at the end of the day, it's a pretty safe estimate that the people of Guam are going to spend an extra 33 million dollars over the next five years on these cranes. Now, here's my question, just because we don't really have the good numbers, we don't know if that's a good investment for us, because we have no idea what they spent or what they did, whether they paid off another company, or, that just opens up a whole nother can of worms. Now, how much would it have cost us to buy a new crane? I know we had procurement out, and, so we had a kind of an estimate around the same time period, and what was a, a new crane going to cost the people of Guam if we would have gotten it?
Industry, industry estimates, and most of the cranes are being produced, majority of them today are out of China, and if we were to, right, as I mentioned earlier, the production process of the cranes manufacturer right now is in the mode of 100 gauge as a production. If we were to have a special production just for our needs, which is a 50-gauge crane right now because of the rails, that estimates that have been given to us would cost a brand-new 50-gauge crane, special production, anywhere from 7 million to 8 million dollars for a 50-gauge brand-new crane out of China, delivered, landed on Guam.
Okay, so, let me, let me make sure I get all this down. So, you said it cost about 8 million dollars?
Yes, between 7 and 8 million dollars, landed on Guam for a China-manufactured production for a 50-gauge crane.
Just out of curiosity, what would 100-gauge crane cost us?
A 100-gauge crane, I will defer that now to the experts here. They did factor that, and, and I'll have them give that estimate.
Yeah, I think you're looking at around 11 to 12 million, in that range, for a post-Panamax crane, which is what you're talking about, which is 100-foot gauge, but it can reach further out.
Okay, so, so 100-gauge crane would, would still cost us more money?
Yeah.
Even though it's a special run for a 50-gauge crane? And I assume that in, that we don't ever need a 100-gauge crane? That's not part of the master plan?
Um, in the future, again, as demands entail and promulgate the effort for duty, and that's what we're looking at long-term. Again, we're watching the trends on how ships are being deployed, especially in our area. There is potential, again, because all major ports and ports similar to our size are operating on 100-gauge program, and to be competitive and to be able to service new vessels that are potentially maybe making routes through our area, through China and, and the Asian countries, that it'd be prudent on us to look at that potential and, and plan for it. We, we did contemplate that in our master plan when we're discussing the possibilities of, again, meeting the needs of the future.
Senator, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, like, like I said, every, every time you answer a question, you bring up new questions for me. Okay, so, let me, let me just wrap this up there.
Senator, I, I think.
If I could, can I?
Yeah, you've already been on 25 minutes.
I'm sorry, yeah.
I want to move on to the next senator and, and give him an opportunity to.
If I could just summarize what we've already said, I'll, I'll finish up with this one. So, I just want to make sure that we understand that we could have had three brand-new cranes on island for about 24 million dollars, as opposed to three refurbished cranes that are used cranes that the Port of L.A. threw away that we're paying 33 million dollars? For five years, and we don't even get to keep them. Okay, thank you.
Any other speakers? Senator Blas, and then Senators Taguay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Glenn, maybe you can answer this question, because you said that in the whole discussion with regards to Matson's agreement on the surcharge for the cost of their cranes, that there was an understanding, or is it in writing, that once they, once they've collected the amount, the amounts that they've, they've invested, that they'll revisit that surcharge amounts?
That is, that is my understanding, Senator. It's not in writing. I've heard them, they've actually gone in, on talk shows, they've, they've said that in our meetings, and that's my discussions with them, is that they are recouping their costs, and, and once they've reached their, their investment amount, that they will stop that surcharge.
Okay, but then, then my next concern is the one that was brought up by Senator Panglen about that same group getting into a settlement agreement with. getting into a settlement agreement with, um, the protesting company. And are we gonna pay? Are we paying for that settlement as well?
No, Senator Blas, uh, Glenn was not on board yet when that arrangement was made, but, uh, again, uh, the port had no, uh, no involvement in that particular arrangement. Uh, that's totally, uh, among the, uh, carriers and the, uh, the asserted, uh, bidder. But the port is not part of that, uh, arrangement, and, and, um, we don't have any, uh, any interest in, in that particular, uh, arrangement.
Okay. And so to make it very clear, too, that surcharge that's being charged by Mattson and Horizon is directly between Mattson and Horizon and their customers. It is not a surcharge that was, that was imposed by the port.
That's correct.
That's correct, Senator, and like I said, uh, you know, uh, both carriers approached their major customers, and, you know, uh, they convinced them, I, you know, because I did, uh, make an attempt, uh, with my role with the Chamber of Commerce to, uh, bring this up, but I'm not a large user, uh, for those particular services directly. Uh, but I left it up to the retail and the wholesale group, and, you know, they've, uh, again, I've been working closely, uh, with the carriers themselves, and they understand the, the need for those cranes, and they were willing to make that investment. Hopefully, as, as illustrated earlier, uh, by Senator Rector, that, you know, it doesn't cost the people of Guam anymore. But, uh, the businesses, uh, have basically, uh, accepted and agreed for the interim solution so that they continue to get their product on the shelves and, and generate the revenues they all anticipated in bringing in those cargos, the respective cargos. So, it's not necessarily, uh, true, uh, that the whole, uh, cost of 125 is being passed on, uh, to our consumers, at least at this point. Uh, hopefully, uh, again, that will be something that the individual customers, the different retailers, wholesalers that bring in this cargo, would, uh, again, observe, uh, uh, absorb, along with, uh, their carriers, and make some arrangements to, to not increase their costs, uh, to the consumers. That's my hope, at least.
Senator, can I also-
Sure.
One more thing that we could do is, is, as we know, how many containers are being pulled off, um, with the polar cranes, and, uh, we know how much they're charging in their surcharge. Once they reach their 18 million limit, um, what we could do is, we could, um, uh, appeal to the Federal Maritime Commission and say that their, their request for the additional surcharge of... Because we, we can, we, we can track how many containers are coming off.
So why wait until then? Why don't you include it in the MOU right now? I mean, you know, sometimes when you start collecting these monies, you kinda, you know, like the idea, and then there's no stopping, I'm sorry.
I'll, I'll permit her to.
Okay.
I'll be nice.
Thank you very much.
Um, the reason why it's not in, in the MOU is, again, uh, as, as Joe Camacho had mentioned, what we, we did with the MOU, actually, we don't have an MOU with the license agreement, is, is it basically allowed them to come and put their cranes on, on our rails. Um, there is no memorandum of understanding with, with them, aside from that license agreement. And, and to, 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 um, say, we didn't know that they were gonna charge the 125, that, that came, um, after, uh-
So you're not gonna know either if this is something that they want to continue with? Because they can easily be justified that in times, of course, maintenance may go up, labor cost is going to go up.
And, and they would, but we also have an avenue or a venue which we can-
So that's why I think it's important that you-
Say that the 125 that they're charging is, is, has met their, their stated, or their stated, uh, cost of, of procurement, or, uh, and, and we can issue the, the request that, um, they're no longer, they're no longer needs to be a, a reason for them to charge that 125.
So have you done any calculations then to, based on the average number of containers that come in, to actually know exactly when then they would reach that 18 million? So at that point, you're able to put it in the MOU, and I, and I would think that you should do it now, that it would end at that time?
That, that's a good point. We have not done, we, we are adding, um, but again, as, as cargo flows fluctuate, and we know that we're expecting the anticipation of, uh, more cargo, um, with the military buildup, we, we can, we can, as you say, we can target it and actually, um, um, talk, talk to them and say, and get them to commit to reducing that.
So, can you then, by this afternoon, come up, based on your average that you have right now, and then, at the time when the military buildup comes up, because there's going to be just the local community who'll be bringing in these containers, and the military will be bringing in those containers, that you would more than likely reach this goal even before that actually, excuse me, that happens?
Sure.
So, can you make sure you have those numbers for us this afternoon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Senator Blas.
Uh, in, in the interest of recognizing that, you know, at his age-
Your time.
Thank you, just, just, as you work your calculation, can you use your April 2008, uh, master plan figures that you gave us? The one you paid 400,000 for? On page 106-
106.
Uh, the master plan, you have transshipment containers at, for 2010, 129,000 containers. For local and tourist, you have 7,800. If my math is right, that's about 6,000, a little over 6,000 containers per month, not the 4,400 that you guys told Senator Rector. Let's get the numbers correct. Really, you guys keep digging your credibility hole much deeper.
Senator, with the, the numbers we told, uh, Senator Rector were actual numbers in July. These are projected numbers, but, but if you want us to use the projected numbers, we could do that.
You also have some from the previous year. On page 104, you say that you guys had 132,000 containers in 2006.
And, and again, it fluctuates.
So I'm just saying, use some numbers, and I'll be real frank, quit lying to us!
Senator, I'm not-
I, with all due respect, Senator, we are not lying to you. Let me give you the numbers, this is the facts. Horizon, on an average, for the la, for this particular year, averages 1,116 containers per month. Mattson and Horizon averages 1,614, for a total, for a month average, is 2,730. Multiply that by 125, as Senator Rector was trying to calculate, it comes out an average of 341,250. Multiply that by 12, annual, is 4,000, uh, 4,095,000 dollars.
Okay, Monty.
Multiply that by five years, it's only 20,475, not 33,000 as initially, uh-
Then, then what are, what are the numbers that you guys gave us in April of 2008?
Again, as, as, uh, we, we said, those, in 2008, that was projections, uh, when we were doing that in 2007, that-
Senator, if I could, uh, just, uh, add a couple of comments here. Uh, sometimes these are reported in 20-foot equivalent units and not in boxes. And that number also, to look at port capacity, may include empty boxes as well as loaded boxes. This crane license agreement only applies to, uh, to loaded boxes. And those are the numbers that we've just reported, the ones that Monty just reported to you.
And where are those? It's not in your master plan that you prevent, that you, you, you charge 400,000? It's not in this 300,000-dollar follow-up? Where is it?
Correction, yes.
I'm only using the numbers, guys.
It's not in this master plan, uh, Senator, because the 125 was not factored in this master plan.
Never mind, I, I just want to know how many containers. You guys are blowing smoke up our, by telling us that you, you have 100, 129,000 containers a year. Is that what's on page 106? 2010, 12,000 for transshipment, 39 department, 39,000 Department of Defense, 78,000 local and tourist, for a total of 129,000. These are your reports.
Yeah, that's fulls and empties. Essentially, you could divide those numbers by 50% roughly, and that would give you the difference between the loads and the empties.
Okay, that's still more than 40. 129 divided by 2, even in my, not having taken DI, is about 64. It's not anywhere, any close to the, to the 4,000. Times 4 is 48. There's, there's still a great discrepancy.
The 4,500 was for the month of July. Uh, so if you multiply that by 12 as an average, you're getting in the same ballpark, and of course, the volume goes up by the year, so there'd be fluctuation. So, you see the math, so we are ending towards the same numbers.
But that's just the local and tourist. Uh, it, are, we're not charging for the DOD stuff or the transshipment?
What we see here is all-inclusive, correct? It's all-inclusive. And there's no distinction made by Mattson and Horizon, as we know, uh, between-
And they're charging 125 per container?
We are not, they are.
Well, I don't care who's charging.
Yeah, we are not.
It's costing somebody 125 dollars a container, which translates to a penny per can of Spam, right?
Senator, that also-
No, that's different, that's a different issue, yeah.
It would be less than a penny.
Oh, please.
Senator, can I just inject, just one point of clarification? Because it includes also the, the Asian, this, this include, the traffic forecast includes Asian, Asian-
All cargo.
So, so 80% of our, and this is again, just rough numbers. What you're seeing here is 80% of, of all cargo come in through Mattson and Horizon. So this is, again, just to get a feel of these numbers, um, if you're looking at 2010, at 229, uh, this is 229, basically, the lifts that we've, we've used. And again, what Mattson and Horizon had, had represented is that they will charge 125 for all inbounds. They will not charge for the, for the outbound. Obviously, I don't know who would they charge if they were to do that, but at any, at any rate, so, and then you have, you have 20, 20, 20-foot containers, 45 containers, uh, 40-foot containers. Um, what were, I'm sorry, this is just per boxers, the TEUs.
Per box.
So, so, forget, forget what I'm trying to say. That, that was a, that was a TEU. What, Senator, what I'm saying is that, is that, you take the 129,000, it includes the, it includes the Asian carriers, roughly 20% of that would be Asian carriers. Um, and, and you take, uh, um, um, half of that, as, as Paul was saying, for the empties, and that'll give you a ballpark figure of what we're talking about.
But the 125 is still being charged even for the foreign carriers, right?
No. No, if Mattson and Horizon-
No, it's not, Senator, absolutely not.
They charge their customers 125. So if, if, if a container comes in from Asia, say through mail lines, and it goes to, to whoever, say, goes to Payless, Payless is not being charged that, that 125. Even if we use the cranes.
Even if you use the cranes, that is correct.
But wait a minute.
Hold on now, hold on. Senator Blas still has the floor.
Clarification.
Senator Blas.
Thank you. Um, is there a difference in the cost, depending on the size of the box? Or is it 125 whether it be 20?
It doesn't matter, 20-foot, uh, 40-foot or 45-foot, but most of the Asian, uh, containers that come in are, are mostly 20-foot containers.
20-foot, right, yeah.
Senator, what, what I, I'm sorry for the confusion, but I was looking, I was referring to, uh, another way of counting containers is TEUs, 20-foot equivalent, so that's why I asked for the clarification from, uh, Mr. Soris.
Okay, and so when we're doing this, so that we, we're clear on this thing, when you, when you're talking about this, you're, you're talking about 20-foot? The TEUs?
No, we, we were, that, that's why I said, forget what I said.
Okay.
So, we're talking boxes, 129,000, that's the estimate. Um, you take out, you take out the Asian carriers, you, uh, you, uh, take out roughly half of that for the empties, and, uh, that's, that's a ballpark figure of what we're looking at.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chair, in the interest of, because we're gonna go around, around a second time?
Uh, yeah, we'll, we'll have second round.
I'll, I'll defer my questions for a second.
Senator Tyree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'm not gonna stay too long on the, on the container. There is one question I have on it, very short and sweet, but then we're concentrating on the master plan itself. So, when you assess the 125, when it comes in as a full load at 125, right, for the container, when it leaves the port empty, is there any additional charge? Because it's based on per lift. So is Mattson and Horizon charging twice or only one time in this lift?
Yeah. Uh, the answer is no, uh, as far as, uh, everything that I've read, because we don't have privy to all the details, but they, uh, the announcement said that they were going to add 125 dollars to their ocean voyage charges. So that means, uh, when they cost that, uh, it's about 5,000 to 6,000 dollars, uh, from the west coast, uh, in that range. Okay, so they add 125 dollars to that. So, that charge includes the empty going back.
So that's two times lift, and they're still only charging one time, 125?
That is correct.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. This is the second attempt the port, um, for the port to get legislative approval for this master plan. The, uh, attempt was Bill 398, by my good colleague here, in the 29th Guam Legislature, uh, which I wasn't here yet, but, um, uh, on December 1st, 2008. My question is, um, what if any has changed from the introduction of Bill 398 last year to this Bill 178?
Yes, there is a very stark difference between, uh, when we, uh, introduced this, uh, back in December, and the one real factor here is the financial strategy and the financial, uh, uh, resources that are now available, which was not available back in December. Primarily, it's the ERA funding, which is, again, a 50-million-dollar application, free money to the people of Guam. Secondly, the other, uh, financial, uh, consideration is the availability of USDA favorable, uh, response to our application. We will know that, uh, shortly, uh, for its final approval, but there's indication there that we would also be able to, uh, borrow or have a credit line of another 50 million dollars. 25 million in guaranteed, uh, loan, and another 25 million on a direct loan. That is the stark difference between last December and today.
Okay, so, the only difference is that there is more, uh, opportunity for funding in this.
That is correct.
Okay. The second question I have, um, there are facilities at the port that are in urgent need of modern, modernization, and there are also facilities needed to be repaired and replaced within the next five years. My question is, what are the most pressing facility infrastructures that either need to be repaired, replaced, modernized within the next five years that are contained in this master plan?
Uh, as stated earlier, uh, in the briefing of the phases, the, the more important, if we don't even go on the expansion of the Phase 1, should we not be successful with the 50-million-dollar ERA funds? The most critical thing there is our current WARF space 4, 5, and 6. This is our moneymaker today. This has to be reinforced, this has to be reinvested in to continue, uh, our ability to generate income. That is our largest income source coming through that dock. Even though we have a multi-function port, that is the single largest revenue source, is through those F4, F5, and F6. And just to put things in perspective, as Glenn, uh, mentioned earlier, that in 1993, we had the major earthquake, of course, everybody under, knows about that, but it, it undermined and it, it, it reduced the integrity of F5. That was the only last major improvement on the port that was funded by the, uh, insurance claim, and we were lucky to have been insured, and was able, in three years, to refurbish, uh, F5. We still need some work to do, uh, in that, because that, again, happened in 1993, and it's time to refurbish it in the anticipation of a larger tonnage, a larger cargo capacity coming through that, those three particular peers. That is the investment that we need to do, whether or not we move on with this military expansion anticipated in Phase 1A.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all the questions I have.
Thank you very much. Senators, well done.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, gosh, where do we start? Lot of places we could start, lot of things we can talk about, considering- Lot of places we could start, lot of things we can talk about concerning this master plan, but I tell you what I'll do, because of reasons, we're gonna go a couple rounds, I'll stay on the issue that's been discussed in this first round, and that's the cranes. And I need to ask this, because in my understanding is that when the, concerning the Matson Horizon cranes, when the board first approved the MOU for the lease of the rails, uh, control over the use of the cranes was actually given to the port, you know, at least that was, that's what was discussed at the, at the, at the board meetings. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
That is correct. The general manager, whoever it is today or tomorrow, will be in control of the operation of that port.
Right. Uh, and you stated that several times, Monty, will be in operation, I mean, in control of the operation of the port. In terms of control of the operation of the crane, how does that fall into line? Because as I understand, before you say anything, just let you know that I do, you know, have information that tells me certain things. So, you know, again, I will let you respond in terms of what is the agreement as it stands now. Is the port still, does it still have the capacity to decide on who will use the crane, cranes and on what ships?
And the question unequivocally is, based on the license agreement that we've entered into, again, the port general manager, whoever it may be in the future, will have complete control operationally, then that includes the operation of all equipment, whether or not it's owned by the port today. As an example, gantry number three is owned and still, again, operated by the port, is owned by Matson Horizon.
How about the three cranes?
Including the three polar cranes. The general manager, in essence, controls the operation for the smooth unloading and reloading of any cargo.
So you're saying, Monty, you're saying that basically, the general manager, if there's a ship coming in, can make that call in terms of using that cranes?
Absolutely.
Without the permission of Matson Horizon, is that true?
Absolutely.
Really, yeah? Okay, I'll note that answer. The other, then I guess they ask, that the next question I have to ask is, my understanding is, there's a new MOU that's trying to be proffered by the, by, by the port users group, or in particular, probably the owners of the crane, right, in terms of how the authority to use those cranes will no longer be in line with what was originally discussed. Do you have any knowledge of that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, as, as, as Matson Horizon is, of course, trying to, again, you know, do what it can to further its, uh, business strategy here, uh, they are proposing that. But at this point, this board, this board management staff are steadfast in not entering into any other agreement and only holding the current agreement in place. That encompasses the whole intent and the whole strategy in employing these polar cranes on the dock today. At this point, as chairman, as long as it continues to be there, that would be the direction.
Hmm. Okay, I'll also note that answer, too. Now, you know, going back to the cranes, you know how I've always felt on the issue of the cranes, you know, only because I have learned as, when I used to be the chair overseeing the port, that the common phrase that comes back is whoever controls the cranes, controls the port. Can you, can you, can you speak to that issue? Is that true? I mean, is that a truism, or is that just kind of a misconception that we put out there?
I, I think I've already responded to that question, but to reiterate...
I'm asking you.
To reiterate again, Senator, and you're right, you were oversight chair of this particular agency during that particular, uh, period, where we were, of course, negotiating this and trying to find solutions.
Whoever controls the cranes, controls the port. Is that true or is that false?
Absolutely.
Okay. And bottom line is, right now, there are five cranes down there, four of which are not under our control, one which is, right, which is a government crane, others, the four others are product cranes, so we can essentially say that the private entities that control it, control the port.
That's not a true statement.
Well, if you just said whoever controls the cranes, controls the port, and then these guys control the crane, or own the cranes, that they control the cranes, then they control the port. I mean, if A equals B and B equals C, then A equals C.
No, that's the wrong equation. The right equation is that the general manager has full control of the operation of the port and dictates the proper usage of all its equipment and assets, as he sees prudent to operate the port efficiently and safely.
Okay, okay, good enough. You know, Mr. Chairman, I, I do have a lot of questions. We're coming up around lunchtime, I'll reserve it for after lunch, or if you'd like me to continue, or maybe I'll even wait for the next round, uh, and I'll do that at this point in time.
No, what, what I'd like to do is, we're gonna go ahead and call recess now, we'll come back at two o'clock, we'll start back with you, uh, we'll finish up the discussions on the implementation plan, and then hopefully get into the financial plan component after that.
Thank you, Senator.
So we're in recess until two o'clock.
Thank you. I... I need to, uh...
This committee, this committee of the hall will not come to order. The last speaker was Senator Spaldon, uh, but he's not in the hall right now, so I'm gonna ask Senator Palacios to please...
Hi.
Oh, Senator Spaldon is here? Okay. I would like to ask the members, just remind again, we, in the first round this morning, everyone was given about twenty minutes to basically make their comments and ask their questions, including the responses that, from the port officials. I would like to ask that we stay within that twenty minutes also this afternoon, so that we can make the round. So Senator Spaldon, you were the last person that was speaking?
Uh, thank you, Mrs., Mr. Chairman, um, because we will be going another round, I'll go ahead and relinquish the mic at the floor at this point in time, but again, as it comes around, I expect to perhaps ask a few other questions. So if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, I, I finish my line of questions for the first round.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm gonna, Senator Palacios is gonna temporarily chair.
After Senator Ada, there's actually no other sign up for the first round, then if there's anyone, then probably be recognized at this point. Senator Ada, you are recognized?
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have, I just have several questions, and one has to do with the cranes, and then the other has to do with the master plans. And the questions that I have on the cranes are basically five sub-questions. One is, Glenn, earlier, you indicated that, that having three cranes in operation is probably what is needed for optimal operations, basically. So you really need about three cranes. Now, um, in the previous attempts to procure cranes, was it an attempt to procure three cranes or just one?
Just one.
Just one? And was that because of, uh, financial limitations on the part of the port?
I wasn't there at the time.
Uh, yes, Senator Ada, that is...
Correct, yes. Because of the limited, uh, funds, but also, again, at the time when it was being contemplated.
Okay, so in other words, then, even if you wanted the three cranes to bring you up to optimal operating conditions, you could not, because you did not have the financial resources to do that?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Now, let's just assume for a minute that the port was able to go out there and procure three cranes, using that seven-million-dollar figure that you had, and I'm, 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 I noticed the financial, the chief financial officer is not here, uh, but maybe one of the consultants can answer. But if, if, if in fact the port was able to successfully procure three cranes using the conservative figure of seven million dollars per crane, that's a purchase of about twenty-one million dollars. And let's assume that's the landed cost, installed, ready to start picking up cans. And then you chose to try and recover that twenty-one million dollars in five years. Do you think you would have had to increase your tariff surcharge anywhere near what Matson and Horizon is charging right now?
Yes, it would be very similar. At seven million dollars with three cranes, you'd need to borrow twenty-one million dollars. If we used the similar terms that you have right now with your USDA loan, at around five percent interest, debt service coverage factor of one-point-six over five years, given the volumes that we're looking at right now that we just talked about, uh, the charge would be one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars per box.
So regardless of who bought the cranes, whether it was Matson Horizon or PAG, somebody was gonna have to make an annual debt service on those cranes, and you had to generate additional revenues.
Right.
Plenty of information, Mr. Chair, on that.
Stay to your point, Mr. Chair.
But this isn't apples-to-apples, because with that, the, the people of Guam would own those cranes after five years, as opposed to the current lease.
Now, Mr. Chairman, all I was asking was a simple, just a simple mathematics of if we went out and borrowed twenty-one million dollars and tried to pay off that twenty-one million in five years, we have had to end up with the same level of surcharges.
Mr. Chair.
May I, uh, say something, Senator?
Sure.
Okay, I think if you add in maintenance, then it'll be more, this is without the maintenance effect.
Okay, point well taken. Now, finally, my final question on the cranes is, when does the license agreement with Matson Horizon expire? And how soon does the port expect, or how soon can we see that there is definitive action being taken to replace those cranes, regardless of whether it ends up being the polar cranes or some brand-new crane from China? But at some point, we don't wait until, you know, if it expires in twenty-thirteen, we're not gonna wait until January of twenty-thirteen or whenever to... So when can we expect to see some movement on the replacement of those cranes?
Uh, yes, Senator, that's a great question. As a matter of fact, in the last board meeting, the board approved a task order number twelve, which allows our consultants, owner-agent consultants, to start looking for crane availability and looking at the cost structure potential of replacing our crane number two, which is our oldest one. The strategy is in place as we speak.
Okay, well, just to replace one crane or the three cranes?
Uh, we are looking at, of course, looking at replacing gantry number two first, and then based on an economic...
Let me rephrase my question. We've got three cranes right now that belongs to Matson Horizon.
That's correct.
And that has a lifetime which expires twenty, what? That's a five-year license, when does that expire?
Twenty, twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen. So, in other words, if you're gonna bring in a crane, it's probably gonna take you a year to get a crane in, correct? I mean, they're not sitting on the shelves.
That's correct.
So we're looking then at as early as twenty-thirteen, that we tell Matson, either you pack up your, get ready to pack up your stuff, because we got new cranes coming in, right, as soon as your license expires, or what? So that's, my question was, when can we start seeing some definitive action? And if you're saying around twenty-thirteen, then, then I hope I'm still around to be asking that question then, as to what is the status of that, uh, particular matter.
That is correct.
Okay. Now, going to the master plan. The master plan shows that the construction to be undertaken between twenty-ten through twenty-thirteen will put in place infrastructure that would accomplish two things. One is that it will provide the capacity to meet the surge in cargo volumes related to the military buildup, and also it will meet capacity requirements over the next twenty years. Is that an accurate statement? Yes.
I'll direct that.
Yes or no?
Yes, that is correct.
Thank you. All right. Phase One-A, Phase One-A looks to bring efficiencies into the port by procuring new equipment, putting in a new information system, building new, uh, yard capacity and whatnot. Now, to accomplish this, inevitably, there's gonna be a lot of procurement requirements that's gonna have to be accomplished. What assurance do we have that those procurement efforts will not end up in the botched up, similar to the botched up crane procurement efforts that were taken earlier? Can you, somebody please describe how that's gonna be addressed?
Senator, um, we, we have for the first One-A, one-hundred-million dollars, we have an MOU today as we speak with the Maritime Administration, who also has been legislatively stood up by, um, the US Congress, and President Bush signed into law last October. They will take the one-hundred-million-dollar grant, which, and, and the...
Okay, could I ask, is there anything in the handouts that we had this morning that kinda shows where the MARAT exists in this whole scheme of things?
It would be on page, uh, four.
Is that page four, organizational framework in place?
That's correct, Senator.
Okay. So can you explain how that framework is supposed to operate, that would give us some assurance that, you know, when we may go out to make these one-hundred-million dollars worth of procurement, that it's, that it's gonna go along a lot smoother?
Sure. Obviously, from the top is port authority, we will, everything is under our jurisdiction and control. We have the owners' agents, which is PB, that gives us institutional capacity and resources to manage our construction and, uh, the procurement of, of equipment that we do need, so they'll provide assistance to that. The federal lead agencies, who I refer to, that is the Maritime Administration, who in last October was, 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 has stood up to be our federal lead agency, um, they are required, and they will take the one-hundred-million dollars, to answer your question, and initiate that vis-a-vis the federal, vis-a-vis the FAR, Federal Acquisition, uh, requirements, and that's how our, our funds would be distributed.
Okay, so can you just clarify this owners' agent slash engineer? How does he, how does he interface between the management of the port and the board and this, this, this MARAT that's gonna hire the PMT? Is he just your advisor, your technical advisor?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Initially, we're, we're having them do, uh, fulfilled finding investigation, environmental studies, and they'll do the, um, design work up to thirty-five percent, after which the baton would be handed over to the Maritime Administration, who will complete the design work and actually do the heavy lifting using the one-hundred-million dollars in One-A that, that we referred to earlier. Their, their role is, as I said, we've, to, to advise us, because we don't have the institutional capacity or the expertise to, you know, to, to manage a port in development and keep it operational.
Now, when the federal Maritime Administration, via its program management team...
That's correct.
Goes out to make this one-hundred-million dollars in procurement, it will do so using what guidelines?
The federal, federal acquisition regulations.
And not just some best business practice?
That's correct.
The ERA grant, um, and I know we'll, we'll be discussing it a little bit more in the financial plan segment, but my question about the ERA grant, of which fifty-million dollars is the application, I guess, that, that's been put in for it, how critical is it to have an approved master plan and, and to be a part of this grant application? And not just based on, on, on opinion, but based on interpretation of some CFR or, or guidelines from Department of Transportation that's, that's actually administering the ERA grant? How critical is having an approved master plan, uh, for that package? And the same question goes to the USDA loan for fifty-million dollars, which is gonna actually, gonna, th- those two packages will actually fund Phase One-A of the modernization plan. How critical is having an approved master How critical is having an approved master plan? Here's our roadmap, ARA, here's our roadmap, USDA. How critical is it to have that?
Senator, I'm going to refer that to Dot, who's our chief planner.
Thank you. According to the notice of funding availability and the program that we're applying under is called Supplemental Discretionary Grants for Capital Investments in Surface Transportation Infrastructure under American Recovery and Reinvestment Act. Legislative approvals, according to the guidance. Receipt of all necessary legislative approvals and evidence of support from state and local officials, including relevant governors and mayors. That's specifically identified in the application criteria.
Plan word in there anywhere?
No, sir.
Okay.
However, if I might add that there was a question also as to what the requirements were for the USDA loan applications. Essentially, what we have here is a situation where both applications, well, we have three applications, $25 million for the USDA guaranteed loan, $25 million for the USDA direct loan, and a $50 million application to the US, to the DOT ARA supplemental. These three projects, these three funding and financial sources are joined at the hip. If we don't get one, we won't get the others. This has been the situation that was identified to us by USDA officials and DOT officials during our, when our, when port officials were meeting with them on numerous occasions in Washington, DC. And if I may further turn this over, discussion over to Mr. Nera Renathakam to discuss the integral requirements of all of these three projects.
Do you have that in writing?
If you don't mind.
Do you have that in writing? You stated that DOT said that if you get, if you don't get one, you're not going to get any of the three. Remember, you're under oath. Do we have any proof of that?
I think, I think what's in writing, if I may, what's in writing is in the Code of Federal Regulations that has to do with that particular, the TIGR grants. It does, it does state in there specifically that priority is given to ARA applications, which is being leveraged by some other non-ARA or some other grants other than... So in other words, if you were to have the USDA loan, which is the other...
Yes.
Right? So there's specific language to that.
Yes, sir. And in addition, the USDA loan itself is, requires a passage of the Master Plan Act. It's a conditional approval that we had received previously prohibits us from entering into any loan agreement at this point in time. And then, and then I'll, and then if I can have Mr. Renathakam provide additional details to that effect.
If he can, Mr. Chairman.
If I may, I can categorically, Senator, look you in the eye and say that if the both loans stand together, if you don't, if the port does not have the ability to borrow the $50 million, the chances of getting the ARA grant are very, very low. And I'll tell you the reasoning why, is the ARA grant is a competitive grant, and we would be competing with 50 states plus other territories for $1.5 billion. And they have very specific criteria that they have enumerated that we have to meet in our application. So one of the criteria is to show that, that project as a whole stands on its own, that is not dependent on some other project. Number two is they ask you to look at what are the benefits that it creates. So we have done quantitative calculations on the benefits it created. So for every dollar that is in the project, the benefits are in the two, about 2.46, okay? All that is in the grant. It looks for long-term outcome. Does it create efficiencies on an existing operation instead of going out and bringing new, something new? And yes, the answer is yes. The other criteria is how many jobs does it create at the port, as well as indirect jobs? We have worked those numbers out, and it shows that there are, what, 1,600 jobs or somewhere which are dependent on this, and all those numbers are there. So that's one issue. So we cannot create all those outcomes without having the $100 million as a whole. Half doesn't work, amount to anything, and they know that. We have prepared a financial analysis based on that whole and provided to the USDA, okay? The other thing it asks for is partnership, so that means it, it asks for a list of people who will support the project. They don't want projects which are frivolously put together, but who are well thought out and people have bettered it, the questions that you folks are asking, that those kind of questions have, the hard questions have been asked and answered because they know that is, that makes for a better project. So we have a whole list of local agencies, as well as some federal agencies, including, we have got, we are in the process of getting a letter from the Secretary of the Navy to supporting the project, which would be included in that, as well as a couple of other federal agencies, but a host of local folks, including the user groups and help me here...
The Chamber of Commerce, the Chinese Chamber.
Okay, all right. I think I get the point. Thank you very much.
So it would be very helpful to have your endorsement as part of that and put it down there. It would be very important, in fact, because you are the ruling body here.
Okay, thank you. I just got two more questions left, Mr. Chairman.
Of course, three more minutes for the 20 minutes, and then maybe another three minutes to wrap it up, and then go to the second round.
Thank you. I guess the question that I have is that, I know it's mentioned in the financial plan, and I believe it's also suggested in the implementation plan, but there's this, there's this PMC, Performance Management Contract, that I guess is going to be put in place. Can you please describe how this PMC concept is then going to interface in the port modernization plan?
Yes, Senator, three important points. One, of course, is this PMC will bring industry standards, professional standards, to train and educate our employees. Secondly, also, it gives us the mechanism to be able to employ the vast resources of this PMC to look at increasing our efficiency and productivity. And third, is the ability to, again, demonstrate the commitment in bringing in a PMC for a long-term commitment and having them invest into the, into the modernization of our port through acquiring equipment, and that's why in the financial strategy, it calls for the PMC to at least initially invest $4.5 million, up to $20 million if we are to go the long-term relationship of a 20-year arrangement.
Thank you. Is this PMC, this similar in concept to what is used at the Guam Power Authority and at Guam Water Works?
It's, there's a little difference. We learn again from the scenario of GPA and GWA, and for the port's case in particular, it basically, this PMC will still have the government, or the port employees remain government employees under this scenario. And all they're doing is bringing, again, the industry best practices and training and educating and the expertise to get us to become a world-class port.
Thank you. One final question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If, for some reason, we are not able to get those federal grants, because we don't meet all the, not all the dots where, or the eyes, whatever the case is, and all we were able to get was the $50 million from the, from the bond market based on the borrowing capacity of the port, is that $50 million going to bring us close to the tipping point of what we need, what kind of improvements we need to put in the port to meet the, just the organ, just the growth in demand from the organic growth for, for the island over the next 20 years? Is it going to bring us close to that tipping point?
No. I think the rates that you have on the USDA loan is about 4.865 average blended rate. You can't get that kind of rate anyplace else. If you go out to the bond market, you'd be looking at BAL investment grade or maybe non-investment grade municipal bonds, and it'll be about 8%, okay? And then you would not have the equity portion, which is the, the grant portion, in order to make the haul. So you just can't work this on borrowed money. What you would have to do is increase the tariff extremely much, much, much more if you did that, okay? And we were, our financial model is based on having it at a reasonable rate, which does not impact Guam unduly, and it is below the rate of inflation, okay? And all those things are not going to happen if you go out to the bond market. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I think that completes the first round, Mr. Chairman, and then I listed for you again for the second round, beginning on, I guess, the first speaker.
Okay, I just, so we finished the first round on the discussions for the implementation plan. Are there any other members who would like to center?
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I asked Mr. Nera the question with regards to the environmental impact statement and the process of the ongoing NEPA requirement with military expansion, and we had some side discussions, but I wanted to put those answers on the record and for the public to, to hear. My question, of course, is, you know, I'm concerned about the fact that we're doing this outside of the NEPA requirements, that we are in fact maybe letting the military off the hook with regards to what it needs to do to mitigate the impact of its expansion on Guam by the virtue of carving ourselves out of their NEPA process, out of the, the requirement. And what does that have, how does that affect our ability to deal with the military and the requirements for funding and other issues that we now may have to undertake through the borrowing, through port tariffs, through resources at the port that may not be available to us because we are now separate or have separated ourselves from it?
Okay. First and foremost, we are within our own NEPA process. So for the, we carefully put together the plan for 1A and the implementation plan so that we kept away from anything which takes an extended environmental impact statement or environmental assessment and so on, and still create the efficiencies we, so we would score high with the ARA grant application, and we'll keep the package together. So we would, our plan is to get a categorical exclusion, which is under the NEPA Act, so it's not outside. So it's just that we disassociated ourselves from the JICPO EIS, and the primary reason was because we felt that that may get held up because of challenges and so on, and that will hold us up also. Whereas if we are separate, then we have control over what we do, okay? And, and that's been borne out because of the fact that we can come up with our own plan without discussing it with them, okay? So go...
Well, I know that may sound like a good thing to you. It doesn't to me.
Okay.
You know?
Yeah.
Because now we're excluding ourselves out of the, out of the NEPA, and we're trying to get ourselves a category exclusion. I'm, I know it's costly for the NEPA, I know it's costly for EISs, but there's a reason why those exist. It's for the effect that it will have on the environment, on the facilities, and the people with those projects, and what it, its impact that it will have. So I want to see those things happen.
Sure. Well, that's exactly what we are doing, because I said, I remember I said that it is within NEPA, the categorical exclusion. So I'll give you some examples. So right now, on the storm drainage system, it's an old-style facility where if it rains, all the water with the grease and everything goes into the bay, okay? Under the new thing, when we get the categorical exclusion and we do the modernization, we would not be able to do that. We are not going to do that. We're going to have grease traps, going to concentrate it, pick it up, polish it, or clean it up before it is disposed of under NEPA, okay? So everything is done according to good environmental practice, okay? We are putting together newer systems, which will then reduce the emissions. We have a whole entire calculation done as part of the ARA grant on the amount of the gases that would be, would not go into the atmosphere, and we can claim credit for that in our benefits, benefit cost ratio, and we have done that, Paul did that, and a number of other people. So everything is good, sound environmental science in the modernization. We would not cut corners because it, you know, it's our reputation. We would not want to do that. So everything will be according to that.
Now, we're doing this so that if JICPO gets held up, we want to be able to move forward, and we don't want to risk not moving forward if JICPO gets held up. Well, if we move forward and JICPO gets held up, and we obligate ourselves to $100 million or $206 million in improvements, and JICPO gets held up under NEPA, what are we going to do?
Okay, well...
Doesn't that then place us at risk, and now we're taking all the risk?
Okay, no, we are not, because...
Why? Is NEPA, is JICPO going to give us money to do it? No, it's, it's all, we're going to have to borrow the money. I mean...
No, no, we are not. Only borrowing that the plan calls for is the $50 million plus the $4.5 million, which is maintenance replacement, you know, loans. That's all. There is nothing more than that, okay?
So where's the balance of the funding going to come from?
Okay, the 49.7...
No, I know that, that's the ARA grant.
ARA grant, and there would be $106 million, which would be for 2013 and 2000 and, I'm sorry, 12 and 13.
And that's...
That is for the birth improvements, which is a maintenance, you know, your births are like 40 years old.
No, 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 I understand. But where's the money going to come from?
Okay, that would come from charges, and what we have told JICPO is that their portion, they have to have their fair share, okay? And to the extent that they can help us get federal funding, 50 million, 53 million in 2000, for 2012, and 53 million in 2013, we would not have any special tariffs against their cargo. But if we do not have the money, what we have said is we would sit down with them, and there would have to be a special tariff that we would have to charge on, which is effective primarily on their cargo.
Senator, can we, can we get back to that question when we get to the financial segment? I have your name on to, first, on the financial plan.
Okay.
And that's why we will address the, that other $106 million and all that, the very question that you're asking.
All right. The, this owner's agent engineer rep that was, is this a requirement of MARAT?
No, Senator, it is our board policy, again, in setting the foundation to have the proper check and balance. We realize that we have this $200 million project. We know that we, we have to demonstrate our due diligence in ensuring that as MARAT itself, as the federal lead agency, who has gone through the process of hiring or RFP for the hiring of a PMT, that we also have a owner's engineering group to help us ensure that whoever that PMT that is selected by Maritime Administration is put in check to ensure that we're not getting, you know, blinded with more costs than necessary, or also trying to, again, you know, put a rug under our noses, so to speak, so there'll be a check and balance, so...
So the PMT is a requirement of MARAT?
It's, it's part of our organizational framework to ensure the credibility...
The question is...
Yes.
Is the PMT now, not the owner's agent, is that a requirement of MARAT?
Yes, it's part of the way to execute... Uh, yes, it's part of the way to execute the construction project and the modernization, modernization plan.
So you have a PMT.
Yes.
And presumably, they're not going to be clerks and jerks, you know? They're going to be engineers and designers and, right?
Right, they'll be the main contractor.
Right. No, well, no, they, they won't be, because you have your, I'm just trying to see, you're kind of building here. You have an owner's agent engineer that reports to the port, then you have the lead agency, then the lead agency has this program manager who presumably is going to be an owner, a engineer and, and, and your representative, because they're working with you. And then you have another, you have your engineering designer consultants, and then you have, is that PBI?
Yeah.
So, and then you have your contractors, and then you have your construction managers.
Right, correct, correct.
I don't understand.
Page, on page four, if you look at it on the framework there, that's correct. The Maritime is the federal lead agency, okay? They in turn.
I already see that.
PMT, and the PMT then farms out, does all the RFPs or bid projects out for engineering, design, and construction, as well as the actual construction. They will, they will again issue out the contracts for all the possible construction company that would bid.
So why do you need an owner's agent engineer again?
Because, again, the port is in control of this scenario.
I know you're in control. You want to hire a guy. I just say, why do you think you need it again?
The capacity that we have.
Are you afraid that MARAT is going to cheat you, or what?
Uh, no, it's just being able to verify and to ensure that we manage these limited financial resources that are, hopefully, will be afforded to us through this grant. That is simply the case.
So you're not going to hire an owner's agent if you don't get a grant for it?
Uh, we already have. It's already in place.
You already hired them.
It's already, the owner's agent is in place today.
How much are you paying them?
Uh, that's, that's what we're paying them through, the federal funds that we're getting to the Office of Economic Assistance.
I didn't say, how are you paying them? I'll ask you that later. I said, how much are you paying them?
Senator, we don't have the total amount. They're paid on task orders, so whatever projects that we have.
IDIQ, is that what it is?
Yes, that's correct. That is correct.
So it could be 1 million, it could be 20 million, it could be, let's add another task order to do another outreach program, that kind of stuff?
No, that does not call for in our strategy.
Wasn't that part of the IDIQ process?
No, it's not.
Isn't that how that thing worked? I thought it was just added as another tax, task order?
Senator, it has to.
No, it's not.
We have to go on an IDIQ, because as we get, we don't have a whole, we don't have the entire funds. If we had the entire 200 million dollars, then we can actually say, this is, this is the scope of work that you have. As we, as we grow, we, we need to, and that's also for the PMT. The PMT would be on a contract similar to Maritime Administration on IDIQ.
So, so what's the first task order, and how much are you paying this guy? Or guys?
I think, I think the first task order we got under the OAE work, may I answer that?
No, you're, you're not the owner's agent.
Yes, we are the owner's agent.
You're the owner's agent, and you're the engineering and construction designers?
No, they're not. They're only the owner's agent.
Can I give a response? You know, you asked the question, why do you need both? And there's a good answer for that, a couple of reasons, okay? One is timing. The PMT is still not on board. And realistically, in order to make this work, you had to start construction in April or there, in that time, okay, number one. Number two is, the PMT, their allegiance is to MARAT, not to the port. That's who pays their bills, okay? And they work for them in other places and so on. So that's the other issue. The third issue is, the port needs someone who can analyze it internally from their inside operations and define what is needed, specify what is needed. If not, then they have to accept whatever they come up with, okay? And these are highly specialized systems. Like as an example, the, you know, next, at the end of the month, we'll start on defining the gate system as an example, you know? And so the, the port wants us to look at the various users and the different systems that are compatible with their own users, and come up with a semi-automated system that will make that gate function smoothly. If you turn that over to somebody whom they do not have control over, they have control over us. If we, we don't like what we are doing, they have to say, come here, we, we need to have a talk. But they cannot do that with somebody else, and that is another, that is one of the reasons. And the third is, MARAT themselves suggested that they go get an owner's agent engineer. That's who, that's where it came from originally, in order to protect your, your interest. So, you know, it's all, it's an interest issue, who is responsible for what?
Senator?
I was informed otherwise. I was informed that MARAT said, you don't need it.
No, that's not, I heard him say that. Richard Walker was gentleman at that time, yeah.
But your, this is, this is a new position for you then? This is a new relationship with you, with the port? The development of the Port Master Plan was not as an owner's agent?
No, it's not. It was, it is a new one.
So you came in as the development of the master plan, then you came in to verify the feasibility of the master plan by developing the feasibility study?
Study, okay.
Then you came in and verified that it was economically feasible? Or then the impact was doing it by doing part of the economic impact statement?
No, the economic impact statement was done as part of the OAE. Only the master plan and the financial feasibility, we did an initial financial feasibility.
Okay.
Okay, because at that time, nobody knew how this was going to be paid. How much you need to, how, what is it going to, is there an equity issue between the people of Guam and the federal government? How much should the, what is the maximum that the people of Guam should borrow? You know, some people are saying, we're going to borrow 200 million dollars to do that. Well, without doing a study, you don't know whether that's equitable. We came, when we did the financial feasibility study, we came to the conclusion that the borrowing capacity of the port, if it exceeds about somewhere between 50 and 60 million dollars, then you're giving money away to the feds or whoever it is, okay? So we did an analysis, and those are the two things that were done, the master plan and that previously. Then we, we would love to have been awarded a contract to continue on, but we were, we were barred from doing that. They said, you need to compete all over again. So we competed again, you know, later. This year, we were awarded after competing, and there were other firms that competed also. We were fortunately selected to go on and do the OAE work, owner's agent engineer work, which we are doing now. So that was the genesis and history.
And what's the total potential fee on this?
I'll defer that question now.
Under the IDIQ.
Vivian, Vivian has that information.
It depends on, and don't, don't think that I'm hedging, you know? But, but I, I don't want to say things which are untrue, you know? I think, and again, take this, don't take this number as absolute, but I think, you know, we have started field studies for the environmental work, okay? In order to go through the MARAT environmental checklist for the categorical exclusion. We are doing, you know, underwater surveys, and then we are starting on the, I told you, the gate system and the terminal footprint and a whole bunch of things. So, so far, my, I believe we have about 2.2 or 2.3 million dollars worth for a lot of people, doing a lot of work now to get, get prepared for this, okay? Now, in terms of the total, I don't know how much it would be, but it would not be 20 million, in my estimation. It would be much less than that, okay? But it depends on, as we move forward, what are the things that the port needs? And how much money, and all the money that they have received is from federal grants that we have helped them go after and get. So we, we helped them prepare the, you know, do the right appeal and the numbers and everything, and they have been, they have done a great job of getting money to move the program forward. And that's the other reason why you needed an OAE, rather than depend on the PMT with the MARAT. They won't let you do those kind of things, you know? So that, maybe, does that answer your question, or?
A little bit.
Okay, what, what more?
Senator, for the numbers itself, Vivian's been working on this and keeping track of all the task orders that the board has approved. And again, just to clarify, Senator, because, you know, and I thank you for that question, because, again, it's demonstrating the board's resolve in ensuring that we are credible, we're accountable, and we're transparent. And what I wanted to point out earlier is, again, you know, it's a board policy that set this in motion. And in our original strategy, there was a quality control, or part of our organizational structure was a quality control mechanism. Now, we adapted that to, to transform this into this owner-agent capacity, so that we can continue to sustain the same direction, but also the, ensuring that this plan will be executed and will hold whoever the, the engineer design or the construction people within these calibrated estimation. You know, it will not go up, and again, borrowing, you know, other inflationary rates or prices of steel in the future goes up, those will be the, the variables. But it is a board policy, as, you know, we listened to what you've said in terms of this particular project should not be on the backs of our community. That has always been our strategy, and to try to minimize the burden across.
Well, I, I don't see that, because, for example, the receiver on the landfill was able to get a, a MOU understanding with the federal government, and I'm not too happy about this, but at least, you know, he did it. But that, that they will use the civilian landfill, that when we build it, they will send the trash out of their base and put it in our backyard. And they think we are capable of handling their trash. We can't handle their power, we can't handle their water, but we can handle their trash. You know, we're very competent to take their trash and put it in our landfill. But we're not competent to develop this port, you know? And that's, they got to put MARAT in there. They, I'm, I'm just, it's, it's a policy statement. It's not a, a engineering statement or whatever.
I understand.
It's, it's this idea that when it comes to taking trash, the military say, we fully trust the government of Guam to handle our trash, but we don't trust them to do these other things. So what it, what I'm trying to get at is that in these structural, in the implementation of the structural organization of, of the port and its relationship to the federal government and the agencies, that, I know we're going to go into the financing side, but we don't have anything at all that guarantees us that these guys are going to contribute, that we're outside of this thing. What if they get held up and we start, and we put in, you know, all of these improvements, or we commit ourselves to these improvements, and they get held up for two, three, four years? And we have the, the obligation now to pay back and raise those rates, because there is nothing in here that says that the military growth is going to pay for itself. It's an across-the-board increase on everybody, and it's going to be the people of Guam that are paying for the, oh, yes, it is, because.
Okay, all right.
Well, is the 2% increase in tariff going to be limited to the military?
Okay, can we defer, can we defer that discussion to the financial plan?
Yes.
Thank you very much, okay? I'm going to move on to the next Senator. That was Senator Uggan, but Senator Uggan is not here, so I might go ahead then. Senator Cruz, what do you want? Okay, I don't know where Senator Uggan is.
Okay. This is probably to, more to you, Monty, than anybody else up there. Currently, what is the largest, what industry accounts for more than half of the employment on this island?
I think it's continental Micronesia employment-wise.
But as, as, as an industry, not, not as a company, but what's, what industry employs the most people on this island?
Right now, it's the hospitality industry.
Tourism.
Tourism, yes.
Tourism has been our mainstay and the largest part of our economy for the last 40 years.
Yes, I believe so.
At the port, you've also had another good tenant there. What industry was that?
Uh, we have several. We have the fishing industry, we have the cement industry, we have the dinner cruise industry, we have also the jet ski water sports activity industry.
But the one that has been there the longest of the, of those that you've listed and have been good paying tenants, which, would fishing be one of the top two?
Uh, well, if, I'm trying to follow your thinking here in relation to tourism.
Well, this is trying to figure out where I'm going to, but.
No, no, but, but in relation to tourism or as a general business?
As a general business for the port.
Well, there's, there's also transportation, the roll-roll, all the new cars that we all drive, some of us, all of us drive cars here. So that, that's another big industry.
All right, then let's just go back to just tourism.
Okay.
The, this master plan takes into account how many acres of property?
Um, it's looking at expanding its current container yard to doubling the size of around 25 additional acres of improvement.
Okay, on page 14 of the most recent update.
Page 14.
How many acres is, is that?
I believe it's a total of 72 acres total, I believe. I'll have the number, exact number for you in a second.
72 acres.
Is your question the total, let me just understand and clarify.
Just this whole page, how, you know?
The imprint here of what we are developing within the pen here is 72 acres.
Okay, that's fine. Monty, in your previous board membership, were you not chairman of GBB?
Uh, chairman of the Japan Marketing Committee. Not chairman for GBB, but the Japan Marketing Committee.
How many years were you on the GBB board?
Uh, I was there for a total of six years.
During the years that you were there, or even now in your business activities, has there been any discussion on this island about trying to improve the cruise business industry on this island?
Yes. As a matter of fact, Senator, back when I first got into the port board, management and staff put together a port conference to, again, address some of the important aspects of developing the port. One of them is the cruise line industry. We've brought experts out of Japan, namely NYK Cruise Line, to give us an overview of the possible potential growth of tourism to Guam from Japan and to our region, to our regional neighbors, neighbor islands. That is part of our master plan. We haven't detailed everything out yet, because we're focused, of course, in the core business of the port. But there is a plan, should I be lucky enough to continue the work down at the port, I'll be, you know, looking at that as well in improving the tourism aspect of the port function through a cruise line industry.
This master plan that you're trying to get us to approve, how many years is it supposed to cover?
Uh, this is going out to about 20 years in, in regards to how the core operation of the port, which is the container yard, is to be designed and executed.
Currently, the cruise line industry is unable to take hold on this island. For what reason?
Basically, there's several, but I'll just pick the top three. First of all is our coordination in our immigration and our customs, mainly the US immigration and customs that we need to, again, synergize. And this is what we've learned from the conference, that we need to, again, address before the ship, the cruise ships come to Guam, we need to facilitate the clearance of all passengers on the, on, on that cruise ship. So when they dock, either at the port or whether in the future out in the Agana Marina or the Hagatnya Marina, then it'll be easy to facilitate the time that the tourists, visitors coming on the ship maximize their time going into the islands and exploring and generating some economic boost to, to their visit to Guam. That's one major. That's one major obstacle.
Go ahead.
The second, of course, is, you know, the modernized, or at least a applicable and commensurate facility that would, again, exemplify, we are Guam, kind of a feel, and again exemplifies the true experience for Guam.
A terminal, a terminal in English.
Correct, correct, to accommodate that so that they're not standing out in the hot sun, or when it rains that they get wet while they're waiting to be cleared through customs.
Or currently, when they come in, what do they walk through?
Pardon me, I-
When the cruise lines come in now, the few ships that do come onto island at this, at the current time, when they get off, what do they have to walk through to get to the buses to tour the island when they get here?
Right now, they have to go through our container yard, and it's not the most nicest part of our operation, of course, of all the trucks and grease that they gotta work through the docks.
Is there also a, an odor that they have to withstand?
Yes, unfortunately, those are the environment at the moment and as near appointed-
What odor is most prevalent besides the exhaust?
What we call in our language, pomata, it's, you know, again, the fishery industry that's there, which is an integral part of this whole thing, but also, one of the other thing is our power plant. All that smoke that blows downwind affects that as well.
And the 72 acres of master plan for the next 20 years that you've envisioned in this, on page 14, this whole footprint?
Okay.
For the next 20 years, would you please tell me where the cruise line terminal is going to be? I know where it's at, but I want you to be-
It's not reflected on that specific plan there because that, again, like I said, was just focused in the container yard area of the operation. We have expanded, we have the expanded-
I may not have taken DI English, but number 18, I know some may question whether or not English was my first language, but number 18 reads, fishing vessels and cruise ship area.
Yes, I stand corrected. Yes, you're right. In this, to accommodate it at the current time, should we continue to attract the cruise line vessel, we had provisions for outside of the container yard, and currently it'll be accommodated as we plan for now is through the fishery industry pier, which is on F3. That would be another option, depending on the size of the cruise ship.
So, in spite of the fact that we have, you have agreed that the second biggest obstacle to getting the tourist industry's desire to bring cruise lines on here is the pomata smell of the fish? You have designed on a 74, 72 acre master plan for the next 20 years, a cruise line area that shares its building with the fishery industry.
That's not entirely-
Is that what's there?
No, in this plan is just showing that we would accommodate it within this period of the construction improvement of the port. The long-term, the long-term strategy is we have-
When is the long-term start? This plan says for the next 20 years.
No, but-
On year 21, are you thinking about doing something?
No.
But for the immediate future, where is the cruise line ship going to be docking?
For now, for now, depending on the size of the ship, we would have to look at, if we implement this modernization plan, it would be accommodated at the fishery area of the pier, because then that is the unsecured area that we would have to comply with the homeland security once we secure the container yard area.
And have you discussed this with the visitor industry, which accounts for more than half, as you well know, including your own corporation?
Yes, and the other alternative-
And this is what they're willing to accept?
No, but this is a interim solution to the bigger picture, Senator.
What time period are we talking about? When, if this is supposed to be for the next 20-
It's a five-year strategy, it's a five-year strategy that we're working with the GBB. It's part of that, again, we coined the phrase of the Caribbean of the Pacific, and this is part of the five-year strategy that we're working with GBB to address the long-term, and this particular industry, as you refer, is the cruise line industry. Today, Senator, I've been to other ports where I see that the ships don't necessarily have to dock up to the pier. As an example, my recent visit-
No, I understand that you can take, you can take, be shuttled in, okay? But I'm fine, I'm just saying-
And we have contingency for that.
Where, here, in this plan, and in the 300-page plan that you paid the combination of $1 million for, what is there, in there, to address the largest industry currently on this island? This tiny little corner of 72 acres? Am I correct?
Yes, you can make that assumption at this point, but-
And where in this document, or in the 300-page document from last year, does it say there's a five-year plan with GBB where we're going to work in, in phases, the eventual implementation of a cruise line terminal and a cruise line industry?
It contemplates that in our plan here, that we need to study that further because that is a-
Where? I'm just asking, what page in the huge document, and where in this one, do you say this is just the beginning of a five-year plan, but in the five years? That's the problem that I have with this, Monty.
No, Senator, please, again, the whole overall essence of this plan is focus on the container yard. We have limited resources, financial resources, to do this in a limited time. What you're asking, I believe in what you're saying, and yes, I am committed to look at this, whether I'm here at the port, and I intend to go back to GBB as a voted member, and I hope to make it, but that is my commitment because I believe in both industries, both the visitor industry as well as our port industry, because I see the link. And yes, I agree with you that we need to spend some time in studying this and ensuring that we have a mechanism, because that is the trend. I will be leaving to Japan next week to continue to study this approach with the cruise line industry. I'm making that investment on my own because I believe that that direction is the trend.
But I'm saying, on this 72 acres, you've set aside probably a 300 by 40 building.
Because that is now the main source of revenue is cargo. Yes, there is a potential for cruise line industry, there's no question about that. We need to work towards that and synergize all our resources to include other federal agencies as well as our local agencies to ensure that we have the mechanism and the foundation, once we go out to market, once we go out to market this in Japan, which is the source market for the cruise line industry.
Okay, I'm just asking, when, where is it in the plan?
The most prudent way to approach this.
There's a five-year plan, and in 2014, after we've sold ourselves to the military, this whole thing is to take care of them. So, what is it, where in the plan is there, in five years, we're gonna start talking about the cruise line industry, and this is where it's going to be?
May I respond? Okay. We did an assessment of the cruise line industry when we did the master plan, okay? I think the table showing the number of visitors per year is, I think, at, on page 112, or there, about section 4.4, and it showed that there were about, at that time, based on the previous year, the cruise business brought in about 2,400 people to the island.
Did you bother to ask the question, why only 2,400? Will you take people into your house if they have to walk through your toilets as the front door to your house? With shit running all over the place and the smell, the stench being overwhelming?
The answer is no, Senator.
Would you bring people into your house that way?
No.
No, no, but that was not the, at the time, even now, the cruise vessels don't go to the fishing area. It goes to the main terminal, okay? And then what they have to do is to, because of security reasons, stop all cargo operations, and then for one day, you have the cruise vessel come in, and then it leaves, and then you resume cargo operations.
So, for $1 million, you've set aside a building of 300 by 40?
Let me finish, Senator, and maybe I'll give you where you are. I think you have a good point, and I'm trying to explain what we can do to go there, okay? So, the number of people who are coming, even with them coming to the terminal, was low, okay? So, we suggested an interim solution of putting him at another berth, and F2, F3 were shown, and we have a separate entrance, and part of the budget is to provide a new facility for arrival. Now, only the dock, you know, obviously is not appropriate. Now, having said that, after we finished the master plan, we understand that larger vessels have begun arriving, okay? So, as part of, one of the discussions that the general manager had with us was, we need to look at other options, okay? So, as part of the final terminal footprint, we are going to look at other options on where we can put the cruise industry, okay? But the plan was always that in the near term, it'll be in the terminal, but in the longer term, it'll move over to hotel walk or somewhere in that vicinity, okay, where you can provide a better environment. So, your point's well taken. I think we will work towards that to provide a plan to move forward in that direction.
As a chairman of tourism, I just want to see something in here that acknowledges that the one industry that employs and is the economic engine, and has been the economic engine of this island for the last 40 years, is addressed.
I agree, and-
And there's nothing in this document.
Yes, there is.
I think it is.
But let me, let me just, again, to put some clarity in your question, because I believe in the same thing you do in growing our visitor industry. We are engaged right now in a lawsuit or a litigation at the moment in a particular piece of property at the port. This is the opportunity for us, again, to, again, put out a new RFP to attract investment opportunity, to develop a piece of property that's, will become available hopefully soon, so that we can address what you're talking about in a more comprehensive and a more planned-out strategic manner. I believe in that, and that's something that we will have to look at.
I'd be afraid of how little you would have placed in here if you didn't have a concern for it. I'm just asking, where in this plan is there even mention of the fact that we're going to be doing this at some-
And I'll tell you, Senator, again, this is a master plan that is in progress. In any master plan, at least I'm associated with, in any business plan, we always recalibrate it based on the market conditions, and this is not cast in concrete for the next 20 years. It'll always be updated, again, to address the current market conditions, and that is the, any prudent board maybe in the future should be looked at, and you should hold that, hold the future board accountable to that, to ensure that it continues to be updated and ensure that the direction, as well as the strategy, the business strategy to continue the revenue source in that particular tourism industry. I agree with you, wholeheartedly.
But why does it need to be updated, Monty? Why isn't there at least some passing reference besides including it with a fishing industry in there?
Because this is only an interim solution. There is a greater strategy to do this, it's gonna require additional funding sources, and that's why we would want to put this out to private sector so that they will be able to, again, invest, and this will be added revenues to this government as well as an added tax base.
Okay, we're gonna need to wrap this up.
It's fine, that's, I just need to get that point, as a chairman of tourism, that this master plan is grossly deficient in addressing the one industry that has fed this island for the last 40 years, and the decision to toss her out in light of 8,000 marines is going to be our downfall.
May I-
Because we've decided that we're gonna have a new spouse rather than the one that has been a good provider for us for the last 40 years.
Your point is noted, Senator. Senator Uggan?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of follow-up questions in terms of the implementation plan. Now, the performance management contract, it was shared with us that, in fact, this would be a private contractor that would be contracted out of the port by the Port Authority of Guam to take care of the procurement process and the release of some of these contractual arrangements, is that correct, Monty?
Just to clarify again, Senator, you're talking of the PMC?
The PMC.
Okay. Yes, that is correct, again, to help us in this growth period that we're looking at to bring all our people up to, of course, world-class standards. We already have world-class employees, we just need to equip them with modern equipment and tools to have them execute and perform at world-class standards.
Okay, I understand the nature of trying to ensure that perhaps many of the conditions, the work conditions, as well as the compensation program, and some of the activities being provided by the Port Authority of Guam is commensurate with other jurisdictions, that I understand. But then, when you shared with us that this entity will be charged with the responsibility of the procurement of some of these contracts, letting them out and going through, to me, it's like a secondary tier of contracting out some of this work? Is that a correct statement? Or, you know, it's, for example, the Port Authority of Guam, right now, you presently manage all of your resources, you presently manage all your contracts, and I understand hiring a consultant that would help support and oversee some of these activities so that, in fact, it's in line with some of the requirements for the grants, and then also it's in line with other jurisdictions in terms of upgrading the facility itself. But letting out and granting an entity, a private contractor, the opportunity to take $25 million and say, this is what we need done with these public resources, go out there and find us a contractor? My question is more or less, then why would you need your existing procurement office within the Port Authority of Guam? It's like contracting out a service.
The PMC was intended as a strategic measure to help the port to rapidly access high, how do you say, heavy equipment, high-value equipment, but it was never intended to be the cure-all to all procurement activities of the port. There is on an ongoing basis, you know, the daily routine, supplies, other, need to acquire other goods and services which our existing team would continue to be responsible for.
But you're talking about the phasing in of some of these particular developments or upgrades for the entire facility, and you're saying the PMC will be charged with taking whatever resources are outlined that you're able to acquire through USDA or through ARAFONS and saying, okay, this is our master plan, we need you to go out there, procure the services, and ensure that it's properly constructed? Or are they there just primarily to oversee?
Senator, are you talking about the PMC or the PMC?
Yes, please help me to understand where this concept comes in.
There's two entities here that we're looking at and we're coining, one is a PMT, which on the organizational chart-
Okay, I'm referring to the performance management contract itself.
Okay, so that's operational, which she's referring to.
The statement that was made by Neera earlier referring to the acquisition of other services that were going to be funded through the loan and the grants through the PMT, that was performance management team that would come within the merit network, but the PMC is the performance management contract-
So, basically, the port will be contracting out a management component of this development process, this upgrade process?
There's two functions here, to make it clear, again, Senator.
The PMT is gonna be contracted by the Port Authority of Guam to be able to manage these upgrades.
The operational side of our equation, because there's the construction side, which is the PMT, that's the one that, again, is deployed by the Maritime Administration through the FAR regulations.
Correct.
We are also employing another expertise in the actual cargo operation of our port. Again, this is to bring the efficiency of the port and the productivity up to world-class standards, and that is why we're employing the PMC, the performance management contractor, to help us do that.
Okay, then, looking at what you just explained, would it be more prudent to go the other route? the other route at ensuring that you properly have the flexibility to recruit all of these expertise internally, so that you have them onboard and they're continuing to monitor the progress internally as an employee of the Port Authority of Guam, rather than managing or contracting it out?
As I said, Senator, we have world-class employees already at the port. We are not looking to replace those world-class employees. All we need to do is bring in expertise to help them and ensure that they are trained in the world-class standards. That's all. We're bringing this expertise in to address that and help us to ensure that we have a training program to, again, educate our people.
I guess, I guess as it applies to the PMT and as it applies to the PMC, I'm trying to see if by any chance the Port Authority can move in the direction of acquiring those particular expertise internally, keep them as an entity within the government of Guam to the employment or to the management team itself, so, and continue to allow them to train and retrain and cross-train all of the other Port Authority employees rather than contracting it out.
I see your point.
But that, I think that ultimately is a decision of the port, and that ultimately is a decision in terms of how we want to look at the master plan and how it's going to incorporate efficiency, so that, in fact, the end goal is accomplished. Just a couple of other questions, and one is the military buildup. I know that we're going to deal with the financial component down the road as part of the other, the secondary section in terms of the discussion, but the military buildup. There was discussion about acquiring through the USDA a guarantee loan of twenty-five million dollars. There was discussion about acquiring under the USDA also a direct loan of twenty-five million dollars, and then the possibility of acquiring fifty million dollars in AraFunds. With the exception of military personnel and the Department of Defense personnel endorsing some of these applications, these are all funding mechanisms that would have to be born, with the exception of perhaps the Ara, because obviously that's given to communities for economic development, that really would have to be born by the community of Guam. So where do we see the military buildup contributing directly towards the growth and the expansion of the Port Authority of Guam?
Very good question, and I'm glad you asked that question, because, again, I wanted to stress the fact of, at least, this board's policy decision. We will not, I repeat, this board will not kick this project out or start this project without the Ara fifty million dollars and the USDA grant of both the twenty-five million dollar package that you just talked about. This has to be a package together. This is the leverage that we have. This is the one-time opportunity to get a hundred million dollars. If we do not get this hundred million dollars by December of this year, or hopefully when they make, that's the rec, that's the decision, we submit this application in on September fifteen. We hope to have a decision by December two thousand and nine, maybe it'll be a great Christmas gift to Guam, and hopefully the money is provided in January. If we get that, then we have the mechanism to kick this project off. If, for any reason at all, that we are not successful in getting the fifty million dollar Ara grant, this project doesn't move. We are not going to burden this community.
No, but don't you think that that's an extremely, a very strong statement to make, knowing full well that even if you get fifty million dollars in direct loan and in subsidies or whatever mechanism that you're talking about through the USDA, don't you think that we've reached the point with the Port Authority of Guam, that if you get fifty million dollars in the bank or you get a hundred million dollars, a hundred million dollars is always ideal, but there has to be movement to improve the entire facility at the Port Authority of Guam? So that's why, my question is, that's an extremely strong statement to make, that if we don't get the fifty million dollars of Ara grants and we get the approval of the USDA, that we're not going to move with this development?
Absolutely, because, as stated earlier, we don't want to, again, have the people of Guam absorb the burden of this modernization. We need to modernize our port, but it's not going to take us the whole fifty million in a five-year period. It'll take us, you know, our borrowing capacity is up to about fifty-eight million dollars, and we will stretch this out in a longer period of time where it doesn't impact our community.
Okay, then, let me go back to my original question. You're looking at two different components, a twenty-five million dollars, twenty-five million dollars USDA.
Correct.
Possible Ara resources of fifty million dollars. Where is the direct infusion that is related to the military buildup that would come in? Ara funds are readily available, and yes, they're extremely competitive in nature, but there's already sufficient justification that the community of Guam could use those resources to develop and to enhance and to expand the Port Authority of Guam, the facilities there. Now, where is any direct military buildup funding coming from? I guess eventually, it's leading to, has there been any official request by the port management or by the Port Authority of Guam Board of Directors to Uncle Sam, whether you want to call them Department of Defense, you want to call them Department of Transportation, you want to call them the US Congress, Congresswoman Madeline Zebredalio, say, "In conjunction with your endorsement of our USDA application, in conjunction with your endorsement of our Ara application, we need direct military buildup-related improvements and additional fifty million dollars." Has there been any formalized request presented to the federal government to be able to augment any financial resources that you could possibly get from Ara and USDA?
Yes.
Yes.
There's not been a formal request. We've been doing this informally. They're now talking about 2012. There are different Department of...
Who is they?
Department of Commerce with the EDA, Department of Transportation with the Safety Lou, Department of Transportation with the Insular Affairs. We have all these different institutions. We think that we, being the port, and together with a coalition of people, including the Chamber, including JICPO, Department of Transportation, we think that if we collectively go and lobby, that we can get five, ten million from one agency, another five, ten million, and our goal is to get fifty million within 2012, and then the remaining fifty million within 2013.
Now, would that be through the direct requests for grant applications or loan proceeds?
It would be both, because we have...
In other words, if the military buildup was not coming, if we, in fact, were not anticipating an increase in flow of traffic, and there's a need to upgrade the facility, submitting your application, do you think you'll still be able to acquire those resources? If the answer is yes, then there's really has not been an official outreach to Uncle Sam saying, "As a result of our military buildup," I mean, you were just visited by a four-star general.
Yes.
"In conjunction with the endorsement of his signature of a letter to the President of the United States on Ara Funds and the USDA," that, I think, is extremely supportive and is necessary in this process, because obviously it would help it along. But direct military buildup infusion for the Port Authority of Guam, and I think that, my question, this is an issue that I think the local government, as well as the local community, is going to eventually have to deal with upfront, because I've heard that there's about seven million dollars in military buildup funds that have been provided to the community of Guam. Seven million dollars for an increase of eight thousand additional military personnel, ten thousand civilian residents accompanying these individuals, and a possible increase from twenty-five to thirty-five thousand new residents on Guam, inclusive of the military, and we've only received seven million dollars after discussing this initiative for the four, last four or five years. That, I think, is a big challenge, to know that, in fact, this community has yet to receive direct cash infusion that says, "Because of the military buildup, this is what we're going to provide the community of Guam based on your needs and your submission and your requirements," coming from either the chief executive or from different entities such as the Port Authority of Guam. That is, that is where I'm coming from.
And to bring clarity to your question, yes, there have been letters sent by the governor to the appropriate secretary of the Navy, as well as DOD representative through the JICPO, to request for additional financial help. To answer your question, is there today a direct DOD funds directly appropriated to the port? The answer is no.
So we're pursuing other initiatives through the Port Authority, and I commend you for moving in the direction of USDA and then possibly looking at Ara. But I think that you're absolutely right, Monty, Mr. Mesa, that the governor had submitted, I believe, about two years ago...
Yes.
...a request for two-hundred-and-thirty-seven million dollars to the US Congress, but has there been a literal follow-up in terms of getting those resources? Because that is really, if by now, after five years, four, five years of discussing this initiative, that will be realized in five years, if we receive, have received about a hundred million dollars that are direct military buildup-related, then I can honestly say, okay, we're getting some direct support. Other than the seven million dollars that has been highlighted, that we're still trying to decipher exactly how those resources are being expended, and the chair of the military buildup committee is still possibly trying to acquire information on that, this is a major project.
Absolutely.
You need reinforcements. You need the additional resources if by any chance you can get it, and that's why I'm asking if by any chance there's been that direct communication, and I'm sure the Congresswoman is very much aware that...
Oh, yes, she is.
...you need the support, not only Ara funds, because Ara is our funds, is a funding mechanism that is provided to inject the entire nation, to inject economic activity into different jurisdictions. So other than that, I mean, is, are there any other resources? But I'll leave it at that, because I think I pretty much discussed that to a great extent. Now, looking at your master plan, the implementation plan, I noticed you're upgrading the entire facility over at the Port Authority of Guam, the main terminal.
Yes.
Yes. That's what your proposal calls for. What about the Hagatnia Boat Basin? Is there a reason why that has not been incorporated into your overall enhancement plan, or has it?
Yes, it is. We are working in conjunction with the US Agriculture in a, in part of their grant application. We, the board has made a policy decision to, again, partner up with USDA, Department of Agriculture, to support, again, from the port's finances, seventeen percent of the project design, it's under design work for the work scope in improving our marinas, at the Hagatnia Marina specifically, as well as we're looking at the same opportunity from other federal resources that have already earmarked allocations to, again, support the marine activity.
Okay, is that, is that part of your master plan that is before us at the moment?
Yes, we've included that, all the different mechanisms that are...
Obviously, I have the shorter version, so I haven't come across that section, so, okay.
But Senator, let me make a qualifying statement, because specifically to your question around, about DOD, I want to make it clear that indirectly, DOD did or has contributed seven million dollars to this effort that we are now embarking on, and that's through the Office of the Economic Adjustment, which is an arm directly supporting the DOD mission. They are the financial...
Seven million dollars to the Port Authority of Guam?
Through funding sources to the governor's office, and the governor's office is using that funding source to help us deliver this master plan and all the associated requirements in our application process for this fifty million dollars, as well as the USDA. That's the funding mechanism right now that, again, is encouraging us as a board, as a port-strong team, that there is actual dollars being expended from the federal government via the Office of Economic Adjustment. This is what's giving us the opportunity to, again, lay the foundation and tap the resources of this federal government to, again, pay their fair share.
Understood, and I thank you for that clarification, because outside of the Ara, which is not reimbursement required, obviously the loan and the guarantee loan, as well as the outright loan, the direct loan is going to be a mechanism that has to be incorporated into repayment. Now, looking at the, can I just get an understanding, the term that was used a little earlier on the Ara grant and the USDA loan was that it's joint at the hips? I still don't understand that concept. You get the twenty-five million dollars direct loan, you get the twenty-five million dollar guarantee loan. Why is the Ara grant joint at the hip, so that you can't utilize those fifty million dollars and just move with the first face?
Before I turn the mic over to Nira, the total package for 1A is a hundred, a hundred, a hundred million dollars. Nira, you want to talk about the...
Just like your total package for the master plan is two-hundred-and-six?
For 1A, the section, 1A.
Yeah. The USDA loan is partly a commercial loan and the other part's the direct loan, and it is much, much, much more higher than their normal loan. Normally, their loans are less than ten million for communities. So they have asked the port to provide a financial plan which shows that they have the right coverage ratios in order to repay this, and a plan that also has enough margin so that they're assured that this would be paid back in the twenty years or whatever it is. And keep in mind, too, that the twenty-five million is from a commercial bank, so they have special requirement, you know, to do that. So when our plan, if we have only the fifty-four and a half, we can do only so much improvement, and you don't have the efficiency, therefore you can't make as much money to repay the loan, okay? So that goes to the issue of how much the federal government should put. So that's why the two are, you know, very dependent on each other, okay? Also, our, you know, even though the military hasn't put any money in so far, they have been, they have come, they came to the table about three or four months ago. Before that, we were not able to get their attention, but they have been working every step of the way in helping us get funding in Washington, DC. And what we had been told was, from various sources, was that the directive was given to provide some form of assistance for the port, okay, because it would be a choke point going forward in the program. So the plan, when we laid out the plan, their response to help was to get, get us, do the best we can to get the fifty million dollars from Ara and the fifty-four point five. So without their help, it would be hard to get the fifty million for the Ara to begin with, because you're talking about one-point-five billion, and if you divide it into fifty states, you know, that's a small amount, you know? So there is special consideration needed, okay? And our belief is that that special consideration is being given because of their support to get that money, okay? So that fifty million dollars, if we didn't have the support of the military and whoever else, would be more difficult, more of a challenge to be able to win that, okay? But the financial plan is what ties the two together, because it is a commercial loan and a direct loan, and there's specific repayment criteria and specific earnings that we have to show for the next twenty years in order to be, to satisfy them that it is a risk that they can take, okay? And together, we have no doubt in our minds that the port can achieve this. But on its own, we, I think you're talking about a car with two wheels, maybe, you know, not being able to, you know, work as a whole.
It's kind of interesting, because I would think otherwise. I mean, if you get all the entities within the community of Guam to reinforce the application for USDA, whether it's a direct loan guarantee or a direct loan, I think that with sufficient push because of the military buildup, that we could be able to acquire those resources. Now, the Ara grant, getting fifty may not be likely, but getting some out of the Ara to support the projected military buildup or development at the Port Authority, I think, would be likely, whether it's ten million dollars or twenty million dollars of Ara funds. I think that without the support of DOD, there would still be a likelihood of the community of Guam being able to be a beneficiary of some of those Ara funds for the Port Authority, because there's sufficient justification with the increased traffic, the anticipated increased traffic of cargo coming through, throughput through Guam, as well as the increased population, I think that's sufficient justification to look and reinforcing any application that goes forward. But you're absolutely right. I think with the DOD, though, it increases the chances of getting up to fifty million dollars, which would add up to what your initial requirements are.
If you go, if logic dictates the selection, then I have no problem. I think you're right. It should be given to Guam, but as you know, when, you know, a lot of times, these things are based on a number of different criteria, and... of different criteria, and having their support is very, very helpful. And we are depending, and our application, we are having them review it, you know, and help us with language. They have given, uh, language that emphasizes the importance, the strategic importance of Guam. So, without the defense, strategic defense issue, it would be very difficult to be able to compete for that amount of loan. Okay? But with that strategic importance and them backing us up, we have a much better shot of getting that money.
Understood. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for your responses there, ma'am. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, thank you, Senator Ogden. At this time, we'll go ahead and recognize Senator Matt Richter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I need to go back, I, with a little further information. Didn't somebody, the last time we spoke in this panel, say that, that Matson was only charging for inbound containers?
That is correct. On the 125 charge that was being referred to.
Well, interestingly enough, you guys have all been distributed this document. It says, "The tariff rules listing for Horizon Lines for Guam," and it says that there's $125 per container, $40 per vehicle, and $5 per revenue charge added on to this, and it says that this charge, sub, surcharge applies to inbound and outbound cargo consigned to or from Guam or transshipping over the Port of Guam Terminal Facility. Transshipment cargo discharged and reloaded will be assessed this charge only once. So, this tells me inbound and outbound cargo. Did I, am I not reading this right?
As your last statement, it says only once.
You're, you're correct, Senator.
For transship cargo.
Yes. It's charged only once, but what we were referring to, most of the outbound are empties, and those aren't charged.
Where does it say that?
Correction, Senator Richter. This is not a port document. This is actually announcement from Matson and Horizon stating their, this is not a release from the port. That is not correct. We did not produce this information. This is the information that both respective carrier has filed with the Federal Maritime Commission.
Right. I, I can tell that, because it says Matson and Horizon on it, that it didn't come from the port.
But your opening statement was that the port issued this, and that is not correct.
No, I didn't make that opening statement. My opening statement is, somebody on this panel said that you were only charged for inbound containers. And yet, on this, it clearly says that the surcharge applies to inbound and outbound cargo.
Yeah, but see, may I answer that, Senator? I think, yeah, I think, see, the, the trade pattern in Guam is such that the containers, predominantly 90% plus, come in full, okay? And then, they go out empty. Okay? So, that's what the issue is. So, it's a round ocean void if there is a full inbound container coming. Now, there are very few instances where there is containers which are full going out. Okay? So, that's what that statement covers. So, you're not, you're not going to pay, the way I interpret that, you don't pay for the empty going out. You, you see what I'm getting at? It depends on the trade pattern.
First off, I, I don't see anything here that says that empties ride for free.
Cargo, it said cargo.
Cargo, so, so if it's empty, it's not considered cargo?
That's correct.
That's what you're saying?
That's correct.
It's empty, it's their containers. And yet, still, somehow, I feel like I was misled, when I could have swore that somebody clearly said that outbound containers weren't being charged. But we can review that, because it's on tape. Let me get on to some, some other stuff. We also stated that, somebody said that Matson doesn't charge for containers that come in on Asian ships. Somebody said that? Right? So, they're, they're not charged.
That is correct.
Well, then, in that case, if we're in charge of, yes? Yes.
Correct.
So, then, in that case, this is something that I, that I, it kind of rang a bell with me. If we own our equipment, and we own two of the cranes, right? And they own three cranes, and there's no charge, surcharge to run them through their cranes, and we can put whatever we want through their cranes, because you're in control as the general manager of the port, why the heck aren't we unloading every single foreign ship through their cranes, instead of putting wear and tear on our own cranes?
Senator, the Pola cranes belong to Matson and Horizon. So, we are not using their cranes on other ships. We're using our cranes, or the cranes that we have access to for all the other, the, the transshipment barges, we use it for the Asian carriers. Because 80% of our cargo comes in through Matson and Horizon, from, from a cost-benefit standpoint, it's prudent for us to use their vessels. If we use our, our container, our gantry to, to offload their ships, we would be inefficient, we would incur higher costs, operating costs, because we would have to, we increase wear and tear. So, so your, your answer is-
No, that, that isn't my question.
Why don't we use their cranes on the Asian carriers?
Correct.
Because it's, it's their cranes.
So, then, we don't control what's unloaded by those cranes, and we don't control the cranes?
We, we do, but it's not our, it's not, it's not our asset, so, when, when our assets are down, the, the, what we, the, the way we've been operating is, when our assets are down, that's when we use the Pola cranes on, on that barge.
So, do we have to ask their permission?
It is, it is, it is their cranes, Senator. What, what we will be doing from, from, is to issue out directives or, or letters saying that we will use your crane, I mean, it's, it's their crane. So, we'll tell them we will use their cranes, send that letter to them, whenever we're going to do that.
To solidify that, Senator Richter, it is a Board policy at, back when we implemented this, that the discretion will be given to the port general manager, whoever it may be, today it's Glenn, tomorrow, in the future, whoever it may be, will be given that discretionary, again, to effectively, efficiently, and safely unload the ships whenever it is necessary.
Okay. But getting back to the issue, as we're, as we're talking about this, we said first that we were in control of the cranes, and then you said, just now, that you can write a letter to them at any time you want and say, "We're going to use your cranes to unload ships."
That's correct.
And, and then, in that case, if you can say it at any time, the 20% of ships that you say that come through our port from Asia, why would we not unload them all through their cranes, instead of putting the wear and tear on our cranes, which you said aren't very efficient anyway?
That is a management decision, and I leave that up to the general manager to make that call.
Good, and the general manager's here, so he can explain why we wouldn't do it. Unless I'm missing something, that seems to make sense to me, sir.
We don't want to micromanage the operation. Again, it'd be the discretion of the general manager.
Well, he's here, so he can answer it. Thanks, Monty. So, Glenn, is there something wrong with my management concept there, or?
No, it's just that, Senator, it's their asset, and, and we prefer to use our equipment for, for, for the vessels that don't, for non-Matson and Horizon ships.
So, you do this just because you're being nice to them?
No.
From a, from a business standpoint, I'm just trying to understand the, the business aspect. If I can use somebody else's equipment for free, instead of wearing out my own, I'm going to use someone else's equipment for free. Unless I'm missing something here, but it seems to me that that would make, make sense, you know, from a business point.
Senator, strategically, if, if we were to use the Pola cranes and, and totally relying on, on the Pola cranes, which Matson and Horizon are, are maintaining, then the question begs, what do we do with our current maintenance crew? Because they're not going to be doing anything. And then, the, the next question that comes to, to mind is, what do we do after five years when this, when this term ends? The, the right answer is, is for us to keep these cranes operational, because you, if you, if you, if you keep them dormant, it'd be just like any other piece of heavy equipment. If you keep them dormant, then it takes longer for you to, to regenerate it, to rehabilitate it. And we want to keep, and we have, currently, we have staff to do that, we have the expertise to maintain it, and that's what we're doing. We're using, we're using that, that's the reason why we, we, we choose to use our equipment for non-Matson and Horizon vessels. Sorry?
Sir, speak.
No, there is no revenue gain either way. No.
No, because we take the tariff, no matter who loads it.
I, I haven't done the cost-benefit analysis, Ben, but Senator, forgive me, but, but, but if we do not operate Gantry Crane 2 and Gantry Crane 3 for five years, then we would have to determine how much it's going to cost us to get it up to speed. Second thing is, what do we do, again, to, what we'll lose is that we have competencies with, with our current staff in maintaining our equipment. What do we do with that? What do we do with them? And, and how do we keep them, I guess, on their toes? How do we keep them sharp?
I, no, I, I see that, with-
But, but that's, it's not a, it's not a, it wasn't, it wasn't based on, on economics. It was just based on, from a strategic standpoint, that's what we, we saw, and that's what we envisioned, and we want to keep these guys on. Before this session regenerated, we, we mentioned that we are, we do have two crane mechanics that are being trained by Matson and Horizon on the Pola cranes. So, strategically speaking, I think what we're trying to do, I mean, my focus is, as we've been saying all along, is to look at getting our own cranes, and if it means the, the Pola cranes, and, and I, I'd like to be in a position where our staff have the competence and the sophistication to-
Okay, but that's kind of outside the question. So, okay, I, I already made my point on that, but, but then, you were kind of implying that it would be possible to do, unload 100% of our vessels with just three cranes? Is that realistic?
For now, yes.
Just yes or no?
But-
So, yes, we could do that right now.
Given, given, given the master plan, we're, we're asking for actually four, four cranes. We need four operational cranes.
Now, when I, when I look at your projection for, for cargo coming in and out, really, it, it seems to me, if I remember right, on the, on the plan, that you actually, after the supposed spike in the buildup, oh, here it is, at the supposed spike in the buildup, we're not really going to have that much excess. Well, no, you do have it like excess. I guess I'm, I remember from an old thing. Brake bolt will go back, brake bulk will go back to being the same amount.
Right.
But you really think that after the military's in, and, and 10 years, we're going to be having an extra 50,000 cans a year?
Yeah, I'm going to defer that to our consultants, who have done the modeling, and talked to Jippo.
Could you turn on your mic?
Yes.
Nice succinct answer. I like that. Good man.
We looked in detail at each of the markets. We looked at the transshipment market, both CNMI and FSM. We looked at the local market, we looked at the DOD market, both during construction and after construction. And you can see that the peak, the early peak is really related to the construction volumes.
Right.
And then, after that construction's done for containers, that goes down a little bit, and then in the out-years, it grows up to about that same point.
Okay. And so, then, you know, that really doesn't show that much of a, of a peak. We see a big gain for the construction, but, but really, your, your peak is only 25,000 over basically what, what the post-peak level's going to be.
Yeah, there's two things that are happening. You have the DOD cargo associated with the construction, and then they're adding lots of personnel and dependents on island. So, that, that's what makes up some of that, that gain, or actually provides the gain in the later years.
Interesting. All right. So, let me, let me move on then a little bit. You, you made a statement earlier that we did, that the port only tried to purchase one crane, because you didn't have the financial resources at the time to purchase three cranes? Somebody made that statement? Was that you, Monty?
That is correct.
Now, you said earlier that three cranes, 21, 24 million, something like that. And yet, you're, you say that now, we can, we can apply for loans for $100 million. That's part of your plan. Isn't $100 million worth of loans? Or is it 50 million?
50 million USDA loan.
Okay, so $50 million in loans. Why, why can you apply for $50 million worth of loans now, but you couldn't apply for $24 million worth of loans for the cranes?
No, we currently have, with USDA, $14 million approved loan. We have not implemented that yet, because we are going after the bigger picture and the bigger money of $50 million. Should we not get successful with the ARA funds, then we would only have a USDA-approved loan at the moment of $14.5 million. That was specifically applied to buy cranes.
That was for a crane.
That's, that's correct.
So, that was for a crane. But did you apply for, for a bigger loan to get all three cranes?
No, because, again, based on our current economic growth, that would be the prudent reinvestment, and the revenues that we will generate would only allow us to do that, because we still have two cranes on the dock that we now use. So, it will not be prudent for us to acquire more cranes, and we do not have the revenue without the military component to pay for this. And we don't want to, again, overburden our investment opportunity.
Okay. So, I, I must be missing something here, so-
Senator, may I interrupt, please?
Sure.
Okay. I think the plan was to buy one crane, but that was before the master plan analysis was performed, and that's when the loan was set up for a brand-new post-Panamax crane.
Well, but that wasn't what was said.
Yes.
What was said is, the only decision was to, to buy one crane, because we couldn't afford three cranes.
At that time.
I, I assume, at, at that time.
It was before the analysis.
And then, and then, Monty, like, I want to make sure I understand this. And then, you said that it wouldn't have been prudent to buy three cranes, but it's prudent to lease three cranes? Well, we're not really leasing them. We're, we're leasing the space so that someone else can put three cranes on our property and then charge the people of Guam for it. So, how, how can it not be prudent for us to do it, but it's prudent to allow someone else to do it?
Because we use their money. We don't use our money.
Oh, we pay for it, though, at the end of the day. We always use someone else's money when you borrow money.
The fact remains-
I mean, isn't FDA or USDA law, we're using someone else's money, right?
The fact remains, Senator Richter.
That's me.
It did not come from port funds, and that is our fiduciary responsibility for port funds.
Interesting. Yeah, no, that's a good point. So, the Board's only responsible for, for port funds, whereas the legislature, we're responsible for the overall well-being of everybody on Guam. So, when we look at it, while the port may not have, have used the port's funds to get these cranes, the cost, one way or another, is passed on to the people of Guam, at $125 a can. And even if it's not being passed on to the consumer, as you said earlier, that it might not be, we consider the business community part of our island as well, somebody is sucking up $125 a can, correct?
That's correct. The burden is being spread.
However it's being spread, it's still the people of Guam, one way or another. Okay, now, I, I had a, a quick question on, on, for the PMC. You know, I couldn't find it anywhere in this, this, this giant document, and, and seen as like I wasn't in the 29th, I just got this a little while ago. Could, could you tell me what, what page it's on in this thing? The original Port Master Plan? I don't have the color version. I got the black and white one.
Yeah, but he's holding up the master plan.
I requested one, seeing as neither you nor I were in the 29th.
You know, the, the master plan was completed in March-
Can you please speak into the microphone, Nirat?
The master plan was completed in March, April of 2008, and at that time, it was, it did not look into how the port was going to be operated, whether it's a PMC or, you know, the port continues to operate. That was not part of the discussion there. But the Financial Feasibility Report, which was done soon after, at that point, the port asked us to consider PMC model and what the implications were, so that, that is mentioned- So that is mentioned in the Financial Feasibility Part.
The handout we gave you, Senator Richter?
Yeah, yeah, no, I saw the handout. But unfortunately, yeah, I saw that part on Page Eight, and it says PMC Investment, and it gives a little blurb about the PMC. But this really doesn't say dittily as to what the responsibilities are, what they would do, how it's projected to go forward. One would think of something that's this major a component of your plan, it would have been actually in the plan. But it's not.
But that came before. It's time... You know, it was a sequence. So that came in 2007. What are we going to do about the port?
So somehow, in between 2007 and today, we decided that our people weren't good enough to make these decisions, that we had to contract out to some foreign corporation to run the management of the port?
No, that's not correct, Senator.
Oh, okay.
Let me put some perspective on this.
Then maybe you could explain to us what the PMC would do.
There was a law put in place, Public Law 2760, that created the potential for the port to enter into a private-public partnership. Since then, when I had the opportunity to help the port out, I've discussed this with then-good Senator Ompinko. He provided us another opportunity to, again, allay the concerns of the employees and to our subsequent oversight chair, Senator Espaldon, who helped us, again, to ensure that we address the concerns of the employees in regards to how this PMC was to be implemented. It's taken us two years, two and a half years, to put together a comprehensive PMC so that, again, we are being prudent and address the concerns of the employees. One of the distinct difference between the Public Law 2760, the private-public partnership, and this new PMC provision that has been put in place is that under the PMC, the port employees remain government employees and are protected under government civil service protection. Under the public-private partnership, it does not allow for that. Therefore, that was not the choice, preferred choice, that we've heard from the employees that they would like to see this mechanism put in place. That is the stark difference between the two.
Okay.
Senator, I need to wrap up.
Well, okay. But, yeah, I know. Sometimes these answers... See, you need to be succinct as this guy over here. He was short on his answers. So basically, the only... You say you have a big PMC document someplace that describes what they'll do and the whole nine yards. Did I miss that? Did that not come in my package, or is it...
No, because, Senator, it's going to be an RFP process. And again, to comply with the procurement process, we need to make sure that the information is intact and that it's prudent to put it out in the proper form through the procurement process. So I will refrain from talking about the details at this point.
So then you want us, the legislature, to buy this sight and scene with just this one little blurb? And I assume that the thought process is, if we adopt this study, which is the... If we adopt this study, then it'll be integrated into the master plan, and that will authorize a PMC? Because there's nothing else in code authorizing a PMC for the port. Is that the general thought?
Today, the Port Authority of Guam is authorized to enter and engage in an RFP to hire a PMC. This particular bill that we're presenting incorporates that because it's all part of the strategy to ensure the foundation
Okay.
for this port.
So then it's already authorized for the board to enter into a PMC?
That's correct.
And where is that authorized? If you could fill me in real quick.
On...
Sorry about that.
It's in the Enabling Act.
Yes. Public Law 29023, October 24, 2007, on Page 37 on the 12 GCA Autonomous Agency Port of Guam statutes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. It's always nice to see where these things are. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Senator Richter. Is there any other member that wishes to discuss further the implementation plan component of the master plan? Senator Pangolin?
Just real quick. I'm still unsure, then, of the integration of the PMC into the master plan itself and its relationship of what the impact is on the current arrangements with the crane, on the viability, feasibility, restrictions of bringing in a PMC with the current arrangements with the cranes.
I think it's two different... It's two different aspects, parallel paths, if you will. You know, doing, upgrading the facility and getting the master plan modernization in process. And then what the chairman has been talking about on the PMC side is to bring the same level of expertise to the way you operate the facility. Okay? So the... Okay. And so what the financial plan... What you see in the financial plan, which you have in this document, is that we take the master plan facilities, and then we put it under a scenario where there is a PMC who manages the operations.
And...
And the employees still remain government employees?
No, I understand.
Okay, yeah.
What are the limitations to the flexibility of the type of an arrangement the port can enter into with a PMC, given the current ownership of the cranes and the relationship of the cranes and the control of those cranes to buy the port and Matson and Horizon? In terms of what kind of structure can the PMC expect? And is that a limiting factor? And how does it limit it? Or do you think it's totally irrelevant to bringing in a PMC operator?
I'll respond to that because I was part of the negotiation with the two carriers.
Let me listen to his first, then you can answer.
Yes, I think the ideal scenario for you is to own your cranes. Okay?
Right.
So the PMC, if you give them a choice of A versus B, they're going to obviously pick that. But that... Okay. Now, having said that, as long as the general manager has discretion on who he chooses to operate and passes that delegates it back to the PMC, the PMC is looking for how efficient can I be? Okay? And since most of the cargo, the container cargo, is going to come through the U.S. coast, you know, Matson and Horizon, as long as they have control over that operation, in my estimation, it may not have a significant impact. However, if you... You know, I've heard discussion about additional memorandum and so on. If you compromise that flexibility in some fashion, which the port has said it is not, it is no way going to do, then it may impact it. But the way it stands, I do not believe so. I think you can still attract a PMC.
Okay. Mr. Mesa?
Yes, Senator Pangolin. And in that sense, where Matson and Horizon is looking at and have stated publicly as well in some of the meetings at the Chamber Maritime as well as the Transportation Committee, that they're not in the business of owning cranes. Their primary core business is to move cargo, ocean freight cargo. And one of the things that they were concerned about is ensuring that there is a maintenance program put in place that will be followed to ensure that this equipment, should they choose to sell it to the PMC or to the port directly, that all they want is to ensure that there is a maintenance program put in place so that that asset remains to its useful life. And that is what they would like. And I think that with engaging the PMC, this would, again, bring that foundation to ensure that, yes, we want to manage all our equipment to have a maintenance program so we can generate the revenues that we expect in investing in those equipment.
It's funny that you mention that, and that's the interest of Matson. You know, because I have here a document, the Port Authority of Guam Container Handling Crane and RTG Review by Matson Terminals, Inc. And this was done, and recommendations were made to put into place all of these requirements for the maintenance of the equipment, including cranes and RTGs and lifters. And the interesting note is that here it says... And this was to the late Senator Tony Ompinko. And it said, "Sorry, it took me a week to get this to you, but God called out of Guam last week." This report was made 24 months ago. And this was dated in April of 2005. And it says, "This report was made 21 months ago, and we have problems. Please call if you would like to discuss." And I tell you, you know, Monty, you say, "When did you get to the port?"
In 2006.
Okay. So just about a year, maybe less than a year before you were there. And I just don't see any of the recommendations in here being put in place, you know, with regards to the maintenance of the equipment and the implementation of plans and so forth. So, again, it's just, to me, it's like, I know you're telling me the... And again, it just goes to show where I say, the employees are great. They work hard. They're dedicated. They're professionals. But it's to get something like this implemented in the review that I can't see, you know, have made any progress since then, just gives me a sense of discomfort with regards to just how effective are we going to be at implementing some of these programs that are being presented in this master plan in the fashion that's being presented. I just have some real, you know, problem with being a wholesale believer, you know?
I think one consideration in looking at it, I'm saying... I'm not saying that that report's bad or anything like that. They're pros at what they do, but... Okay, but it was done... Yeah, it was done quite some time ago. It sounds like 2005. But in developing a plan, it's important to look at all the users of the facility, the Asian carriers, you know, Seabridge, who is transferring, you know, containers back and forth, the transshipment service, as well as the Matson, Horizon, and everything. And so you may come up with a different way of doing things if you look at it totally, as opposed to just with one...
This was just for maintenance of equipment. It had nothing to do with, you know, port systems, operational. It's just maintaining equipment, purchasing parts, wanting to get in systems, maintenance schedules, training. That's all this is. It has nothing to do with operational elements that you would say if Matson did it, they may be biased towards Matson and, you know, propose systems that would make it easier for them to do their business based upon their operational requirements while ignoring or sacrificing the operational efficiencies for other carriers because their main concern would be them. It's just...
I'm not saying that they do that. I'm just saying it's best to get...
No, I understand.
Yeah, look at it equitably across the board.
That's correct. So whether the equipment's being used by somebody else or by Matson, if it's the same equipment and it's working well, it benefits everybody across the board. There's no kind of bias involved in that to make sure that this one operates...
No disagreement there.
At 90% efficiency all the time, so... But I bring that up because I'm concerned about the PMC. I'm concerned about the current state of the agreement. And as I ask, is this going to have an effect of us getting, if we want to pursue a PMC, a world-class port operator? Or is somebody's going to say, "Well, you can't expect me to come in there, guarantee you all these efficiencies," and I'm not so sure with regards to the lifeline of the movement of cargo, which is cranes?
Right. You know, the PMC has a big incentive to keep the equipment maintained well because that's how they will make money, you know? That's one aspect. So I think that will... And they also, somebody else, the senator asked in terms of just hiring and putting a team together. But a lot of times, a PMC with other operations elsewhere has everything in place as an organization, you know, to support that.
Right.
The other thing is, our plan also, and when we get to the financials, we'll talk about that. Over the 20-year period, all the cargo handling equipment replacement capital, the plan is based on the PMC providing that. So if the first set of topics and whatever else become, you know, they're worn out, then the replacement is in their responsibility at that point. So that gives them an added incentive to make sure that proper preventive maintenance, you know, protocols are followed and systems are set up in order to make sure that it operates well because that's efficiency.
Right. And again, the question I had and the concern I had goes back to a statement that Glenn made and, you know, not knowingly or maybe it was just a... It's not the way things are, but somehow, somebody, he must have thought that, that he said that statement, and that is, "Oh, yeah, we control the cranes. If we want to use it, we just write Matson a letter and say we're going to use it." You know what I mean? So a PMC is going to come and says, "Well, you control the cranes, but you need to write a letter to tell them you're going to use it, or you even think about that?" You shouldn't even have to think about that. You should just say, "We're in charge. We deploy this to the most efficient ability." But, you know, and maybe it's just a slip of the tongue.
I know. I think if the other two... If the other two cranes, the Subic crane, as they call it, and the other crane, which is the port's crane, were not there, then I think you would be right on. I mean, that would not work. But the fact that there are two cranes there, okay? And then a lot of the Asian carriers are more focused toward... They have containers coming in, but they also have break bulk, you know? And they have... It's not a dominant container trade. So in the break bulk arena, a lot of times, you ship cranes to unload and the portable crane to unload sometimes, okay? So it's a different operation. So the demand for these high-volume, purpose-built container cranes is less for that trade because they're smaller vessels.
Yes.
Some of them are combo vessels, we call it. So they have both cargo. So, you know, that's part of the consideration.
Right, but again, it's that idea that if it's thought about, then it's being thought about of, well, maybe we really don't have absolute control over these cranes, you know? Because that thought's entered my mind of, maybe just as a courtesy, I'll tell them I'm going to use their crane. You know what I mean? But if you have to go that far, then what's a PMC going to say? I got to always be courteous? You know, and I can't just be... I know that Rick has, you know, implemented a fairly strong hand in one instance in terms of when he just told those guys, "You're coming in next. You're next, and we're going to use this crane. We're going to use that crane. And this is the Port Authority of Guam. That's the way we're going to do it." And I think that the... You know, while everybody else was jockeying to be first, Rick just said, "Operational? What's the interest of the port? This is the way it's going to go." And it went, and it went smoothly. And I know because they told me the story, Rick, so... You know, and... But we need to have that kind of certainty in the control over this thing. And, you know, if this is... If the implementation of the PMC is going to be between 2010 and 2013 or '15, then until that resolution of, are we going to get our own cranes? Are we going to have total control and all that? Absolutely definitive, no question. We can guarantee it to the PMC coming in. Then that gives us a better leverage to getting the best PMC manager we can because he expects to perform. He's going to be expected to perform. And there's nothing in any kind of agreement under control of the operation that may impede his ability to do so. So that's why I think it's necessary to resolve that matter.
That's correct.
Yes, Senator, when vessels come in, they just don't come in one at a time. So let's say you have a Matson or Horizon vessel that's in at F6, and you have a KOL or a Mel vessel or even a Seabridge vessel over F4, then we use all of the assets. And we want to be using the assets all of the time because if you don't use an asset, it basically deteriorates. And so we want our people to be trained up from the Gantry Two and Gantry Three, which is the Subic crane. And so we have mechanics from the Port Authority... And so we have mechanics from the Port Authority that are being trained on the polar cranes, so that we're raising the level of expertise should we get newer cranes with newer components.
Senator Cruz?
Thank God for BlackBerries. On the cranes, I hope, you know, it seems like I'm fixated on it. Did I understand you saying that you've asked someone to go out and look for refurbished crane for you?
Yes, the Board made a policy decision on Task Order Number 12 to, again, instruct or at least have the authority for the owner, agent, consultant to look at seeing what could be available and what the cost analysis benefit would be if we are to go out and get a crane today that would be able to function with our specific requirements.
And Task Order?
12.
Task Order 12?
Yes.
How much is that costing you?
I will defer that. Vivian has all the numbers. Vivian Leon is managing our procurement area on that. Vivian?
We authorized our consultant to, up to $237,000.
You are paying them $237,000 to send out a couple of dozen emails to different ports throughout the world to find you a refurbished crane? Can I have that job?
No, no, no. They're to perform analysis as well as.
The task would be on three continents to find what is available in terms of cranes. So the first task would be to do a desk study to understand, get parameters of what cranes are available and where, and then there would be an analysis done on which are the most suitable, and then we have discussions with the port. And then there would be two people, you know, who would go visit the selected cranes in, you know, some may be in Asia, some may be in Europe, and then the mainland. And then there would be a detailed inspection report of the condition of the cranes and their ability to handle the cargo the way they want it to handle, and then estimate a cost on what it would take to modify those cranes, because we know that we would not be able to use them as is. So all the various specific work that needs to be done in order to make it compatible with what is needed here will be performed in terms of an estimate, and then we would come back and make recommendations on which ones are most appropriate, and then also have backups in case those days don't work. So you have a solid document that you can use as the basis to discuss what your options are.
In that task order, you can spend up to, or bill up to $237,000 for it?
Yes, that is not, that's not an unreasonable amount, because you have to send people to different locations, they have to do a lot of analysis. It's not like just saying, "We picked that crane." If they look at a crane and if it hasn't, if it cannot, I mentioned typhoon conditions earlier, they have to perform some analysis, preliminary analysis, to find out how they're going to modify it. If they have to raise it in order to go over certain vessels that are coming there, they have to figure out how much, how they're going to do that and make that analysis. If not, you'd be somewhat flying blind. So that's part of the process.
And in the event that you find one and we have to go through the process of purchasing it, that will be a separate task order?
If you decide to purchase it, then the port would have to decide what the procurement process would be, okay? Whether it goes through the PMT, or whether there is a local procurement process, or, you know, what that, how that works.
But your task order, when does your task order stop?
Wait till I finish answering the question, please. So in terms of how they execute that process, in order to review the documents, understand what they're doing, and advise them, yes, there would be a task order, that would be our recommendation to them. Now, it's up to the port not to do that, but that would be our recommendation in order to get you a good product, yes.
So we could conceivably spend a half million dollars for you to find us a refurbished crane that we're going to have to pay to fix when we could instead already have an order in for a brand-new crane, special-ordered 50-gauge, so that we don't need to do the hundred because it'd be too big for this port. But we're going to pay you $237,000 to find us one that needs to be fixed up, and then fix it up, and then get it here instead of?
The intent, Senator, if I may, I'm sorry, I'm not, I don't mean to interrupt, but it would be not to, for one crane, but we would want to at least identify three cranes because you want to be able to have that. Now, let's hope that you don't have to go through the process of purchasing and bringing all those cranes and having that in addition to the Matson, Horizon crane, but the intent is that if you have that option, then you would perhaps be able to address the concerns that have been raised here.
Monty, is this, is this part of the $7 million from the Office of Economic Judgment?
Yes, it is. And it is the Board policy, Senator. Again, we're looking at a prudent measure and without giving away our negotiating tactic and strategy that we are looking to engage with Matson and Horizon. Again, this is a strategy that we put in place. As Vivian mentioned, it's up to, we did, like I said, engage the task order pending, again, our approval because it's a strategic move, without, again, weakening our bargaining position. And I'm under oath, and I'm telling you the truth, this is a strategy that we're looking at so that we will have leverage.
How many other task orders of the $7 million is with the Port Authority? I know that we were surprised last week, or a couple of weeks ago, when we had 350 for the M2R2 or whatever, M2D2 or whatever that, the seven-page report. And so I'm trying to figure out how much of the $7 million was given to the port. Did you guys get all $7 million of that?
No, it's still being controlled by the Office of the Governor, and we, again, tap the resources based on the task orders that we want to employ to, again, facilitate this modernization implementation plan.
Is, are there any other task orders? I mean, this is Task Order Number 12.
Yes, there is. Up to Task Order Number 23.
Mr. Chairman or Madam Chairman, can the port provide us with a list of all the task orders and the amounts?
Yes.
And what they're for?
Yes, that is reflected in our Board minutes, and it is there. We will provide you with the Board minutes and the discussion attaching all that schedule. We will provide that for you.
Can it be brought in tomorrow morning with the requests that we asked for this morning that was presented this afternoon on how much we're paying Matson, Horizon for, or allowing Matson, Horizon to recover on the cranes? I think this morning, one of us asked for, "How much is Matson, Horizon realizing from its $125 a container surcharge?"
The price was set, and it's public price that they had to file with the, it's $125.
I understand, but how much, how many containers?
To date, to date, yes.
To date, and how much?
That we can estimate, yes. Based on the cargo that we are unloading from their ships, we can ascertain that we will have our operations people get the numbers, and it'll be, again, verified with our financial people.
We did ask for that this morning, or am I losing it?
Yes, JoJo here has that, and he'll pass out a copy of what our records reflect.
And could we, in the morning, get a copy of that list of task orders, 1 through 23, so we know?
Yes. I think it's on Vivian's computer, and we could possibly just print it out here in somebody's spinner and make copies of it.
Thank you.
Senator Cruz, are you done? Yes. Senator Pangolino, Speaker Pangolino, you're recognized.
Yeah, they're giving us that spreadsheet on the estimate on the revenue for Matson and.
Yes, based on the question this morning, yes.
Just one curious, are you required to use the polar cranes on Matson ships?
That is their, that is their request, and that is their position, because they own the crane, they want to use it on their ships. That is their position.
Yeah, but you control it.
That's correct, and I leave that up, I don't, again, I'm not micromanaging.
They're the most efficient cranes.
I didn't ask you if they were the most efficient. I said, "Are you required to?"
Oh, no, 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 no.
So you could conceivably just decide to use the port cranes?
Yes, absolutely.
And you could save all these people $125?
Yes. But again, if we, the report that you referred to several years ago was based on those two cranes, and Senator, to use those two cranes to increase for, if we were to do that, adopt that strategy, if you will, that would increase our operations cost, it'll increase the wear and tear. And at this point in time, these cranes are not that reliable. They've been, especially the last, Rick can chime in on the last week, we've had Gantry Crane III, which is the Subic crane, go down several times for the last two or three weeks, is my understanding.
Just tell Matson, now you're going to keep using those cranes on their ships until they sell you the cranes?
We need them to be reliable, sir.
Yeah, but that's the negotiating position you can have, say, "Hey, by the way, you know, every other, every other ship, we're going to use our own crane and see how long they hold out."
Thank you, Senator Pangolino. Senator Ada, you're recognized.
Thank you. You know, I got some feeling of ambivalence here about the initiative being taken on the cranes. And it seems, just based on, you know, your description of this task order, is that PB has been tasked to go out and find answers, and then when you find the answers, we'll come back and we'll formulate the questions to fit the answers. And I'm concerned about that because I almost smell protests coming up. The minute we go out, I mean, so this money is being spent to go out there, and we're going to find cranes 1, 2, and 3, and we're going to study the specifications on this crane and all that stuff. And the only, the only way that that information is going to be valuable to the port is if, when it comes to the time then to draft up an RFP, we say, "Here's what we want. We want a crane that has these specifications," which just coincidentally fits the specifications of those cranes that we find out there. So when we put out the RFP, who's going to respond? Crane, the owners of cranes 1, 2, and 3, which meet these specifications. It seems to me that the initiative should have been to draft the RFP with the specifications of a crane that the port is going to need to put in place. So we formulate the question, and then go out and see if the answers are available out there. But it seems like we're doing it backwards, and we're going to be right back to the same scenario that we had with the first two procurement initiatives that we had. Is that correct?
I think, you know, the intent is not to identify this or that or that crane. When it comes to the procurement process, you'd have to follow the procurement law. So if you, let's say if you identify 10 cranes and seven are suitable, then, you know, you would have to make this public information where all the bidders have that information, and they can do what they want, or they can supply some other crane that is not on the list.
I understand. I just don't understand the logic though.
And, okay, the owners of the crane are not the ones who bid on this. It is other contractors who have to purchase it, then they have to refurbish it, do all the engineering calculations and so on, and then they have to transport it, install it, set it up, all that is part of that. So it's not the owners of the crane just want to get rid of that, see? So it is just that you, the port has a very practical understanding of what is reality. And then that information would have to be shared as part of the procurement process. So it's no question, you're right, absolutely.
Monty?
Senator Ada, let me just put some clarity on that. That's a valid point that you had, but this is a Board policy, Senator, that we've engaged in, and one of the things that we were hoping to be is being successful also in engaging a PMC. And this is where the world-class, global reach of this PMC that would possibly have that service and have that resources to reduce the potential of having to go to that exercise that you've just described. Yes, I agree with you, that seems to be apparently maybe backwards, but as I mentioned to you earlier, again, this is part of our strategy. We've approved a task order, we haven't triggered actually for them to go, we're holding that off because, again, it's a strategic move that we're looking at because we want to send a clear message to both carriers that you are not going to force us in this predicament that we are faced with. We are implementing a strategy for leverage.
Madam Chair, I'll just end my comments here, and that I'm just going to basically state for the record that I really disagree with how this initiative is going to be taken. If we're going to want to send a strong message to Matson and Horizon that, you know, we plan to put in cranes that belong to the port by the time that license expires, that then the best way to send that message is probably to send out an RFP, to let them know that we are out looking. But, you know, to pay the consultants that $200-plus thousand to go find an answer, and then we're going to come back to craft the question, just does not, does not settle well with me. I really have a problem with that.
I'm just kind of curious, the legal counsel is here. You said this was a Board policy, Monty. Was this discussed with legal counsel during the Board meetings, and was this kind of like cleared that this will not affect and run afoul of any potential procurement problems?
Monty?
Senator, again, with the privilege of attorney-client privilege in terms of the Board consulting with an attorney, a refrain from answering that question under that particular arena of client-attorney privilege.
Was this discussed at a Board meeting? This strategy? Because you said this is a strategy. Was this strategy discussed at a Board meeting? Was it put to a motion, and was it adopted?
In this particular case for Task Order Number 12, yes, it is.
Okay. Can we get the minutes of those?
That is reflected together with that Board minutes that, when we approve the task orders from, I believe, 9 to 23, which includes 12, all of that is encompassing, and yes, we will provide the minutes of that Board meeting in, again, approving all those task orders.
And all of this discussion occurred with the benefit of the presence of counsel?
Yes, the counsel is present at that Board meeting, yes.
Senator Ada, you still have the floor. Did you want to continue with anything?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay. Are there anybody else wishing to speak on round two? With that being said, it's quarter to, Senator Espaldon, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, there was a line of questioning earlier concerning the owner, agent, engineer, right, and I guess that would be PBI, right? Now, you are with PBI.
I'm with PB Americas. No, PB Americas, which is, and PBI, they are all part of the same holding company. They are, you know, it's all one organization, but because it, because the work, the geographical locations at which we work, it's organized into separate companies. geographical locations at which we work, it's organized into separate companies.
So PBI, and correct me, is, you're PBA, let's say, it's PB America?
Most of the work is being done, the people, most of the folks who come here are from PBA, have been from PBA.
Have been from PBA.
Correct.
Now, I understand you're under, a holding company. I guess, you know, you're all one family in essence, but you're separate companies, correct?
It's...
I mean, I mean, in other words, you, as PBA, have different financials and file different financials as PBA than you do, than PBI.
I don't know enough about that, the specifics of how that is done. You know, I'm the, the engineer guy and the port operations person.
Well, this is what I'm just trying to get to, right? If our contract is with PBI and you are acting as the owner, agent on behalf of PBI, right, as PBA, then you basically are being subcontracted to do the work.
You know, it's all within the same organization, and it is the, my, I'm not the OAE or Jeff Peck, who is the project manager, is not the OAE. The OAE is the company that signed the contract.
Is PBI.
My understanding is that was, and again, I'm not privy to all the details of, you know, I'm the, the guy who does the work or one of the guys.
Yeah, no, and I, and I appreciate that, but since you're here, you're the only guy can ask.
Specific answers.
Here we are, right? And, and my concern here is this, right? If our contract is with PBI, you're PBA, and I'm understanding full well, and I'll take your explanation, that you don't understand the mechanisms of what's being involved in terms of contract negotiations. However, that being said, if we had contracted PBI, PB International, to do a job, and then they subcontract to PBA, even though you're brother-sister organizations, but I would have to maintain, that doesn't necessarily mean that you're the same organization, you're the same corporate entity, because I would be, I would have to believe that PBA has its own corporate papers, different from PBI, because my understanding is PBI is a Taiwan-based company. Then the issue here then becomes that we're paying too much to PBI. In other words, why don't we just co-contract, have the owner, agent with PBA?
I don't know the answers to those kind of questions.
Why do we have to? Well, exactly, and I just want to make that point because, again, now it becomes an issue of, are we paying too much? And as we go down this road and we start talking about $200 million, how much of that money is going to get siphoned off, you know, to pay a fee that probably we shouldn't have to if we went directly with the company that we're supposed to be dealing with in the first place? And I'm just going to put that out there. I mean, that's a question that's in my mind that I've been holding back on, right, because it's taken me a long time to figure out how this is all being structured, and it's taken me several years to figure this one out. But now that we're coming to this point where we're talking about $100 million plus another two, plus another $100 million after that, and then you start questioning how efficient, how effective and how smooth and transparent this whole process is going to be, right? Knowing full well that, again, we hired PBI and yet it's PBA doing our work, right? Then somehow that just tells me somebody's taking a cut of money someplace else without having to do anything.
Yeah, I, I think, if I may, I, I know that the work that deals with the civil engineering work is done by employees out of Taipei, and this was the way that we worked. We work as, as one company, and that was the way the master plan was done. Those same folks were involved in, we have the same email, pbworld.com, we have access to each other's servers, we have access to each other's organizations and principals and staff and so on. So that's all I know. I'm looking at it from the way things are done.
Right, and I appreciate what you were trying to explain, but again, it's not going to go deep enough because even you admit that you don't know how this all works out, right, how this all pans out. But I'm raising it right now because it's a concern going forward that if we are really going to truly use the full amount of money for the full benefit of the port, then we should have to cut out that middleman. That's my point. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator. Senators, it's 10 minutes till 5:00. What I'd like to do is recess at this time until 9:00 AM tomorrow. My request that the port make available the documents that have been requested, and that is the copies of the task orders and the minutes that's associated with it. And I believe that was the only document that was requested that is outstanding. So with that, we'll recess until 9:00 AM tomorrow.